This meeting is called to order. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks and this is the City Council Work Session Meeting for Tuesday, November 25th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. I will start off with roll call, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Carroll is on his way. Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
Councilman Perkins.
President.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
Councilwoman Adie.
Present.
And I will recognize our City Manager Shaquilla Miller Thornton. At this time, are there any updates or changes to the agenda?
I have an update.
Yes.
Just last change. So, I would like to add, an agenda item is Item 7C. So just a brief intro on this. This is a change of ownership application and alcohol license that was applied for. It's been through all the administrative processes and the admin, our staff got the background check back today. And so if it doesn't go through, it ends up, we don't have another meeting until January. So this will just allow them to keep moving forward.
Okay.
So I'd like to add that is Item 7C, and then move all of the items down one.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to add as 7C to discuss the change of ownership and alcohol license applications for Raj, Limbra, for Pulse Gas LLC, DBA, Rocket Shell, and Food located at 1307 Rocket Road, Clarkston, Georgia. Are you ready for the question? All in favor to approve the updated agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. And so what we'll do, because this is a pretty hefty agenda, right? So we have some ordinances that we did as a council, but we also have some, some items that we have as far as the actual charter stating that the time designation for work session, the time allocated for discussion and comment on each work session item is a maximum of 20 minutes for council and a separate maximum of 20 minutes for public comments per item. And so I have the discretion of extending it. Also in there, it also states that each council member will be allowed to speak twice on an item unless, for example, the person is the, who brought the item. Anything else that I need to be mindful of as we start the meeting, Mr. Quinn?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Just one thing I noticed is that the policy does say that council members are urged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Okay. And the hearings are subject to the, either the 40 minutes for the maximum for each hearing item that we have. For zoning, and then we normally do 20 for a regular item.
Right. But, so if, half of that amount would be 20 minutes, and for those zoning ones, it's divided by in favor or against.
Right. Okay, absolutely, yes.
Point of our question. Councilman Carroll, I think is online on Zoom. Is the Zoom on?
Councilman Carroll? Present. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay.
Is, okay, there you are. All right. Thank you, Councilman Carroll. So we have him accounted for. Now we'll move on to the public hearings, and we have quite a few. At this time, we'll start with 3A, which is to hear public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2026 operating and enterprise fund budgets. I'll allow City Manager Thornton to kind of kick it off before we allow the public to speak. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to just talk through some of the amendments. Of course, we won't go through the full budget proposal. We'll just talk through the ones that, the things that have changed since last rendition. There's a, James, there's a slide, a deck. Yes. Thank you. Next, next slide. Next. 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 We'll get into it. Okay, so tonight is our last public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget proposal. Adoption of the budget is set for December 2nd, which is next Tuesday. Next. 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 Okay, so since presentation of the budget back in October, current budget is proposed at $10,445,625 for general fund budget. This includes an offsetting expenditure expectation of the same amount. This amount is $46,826 less than the previously proposed revenue and expenditure estimate. Right now we are proposing 76,836 in general fund reserve balance alloc- appropriation. Next. This is the general fund summary. So our property taxes are about 57% of the revenue estimate for 2026. And then there's a breakdown of the other different revenue sources. Next. This is the 2025 revenue comparison to the 2026 proposed budget. Again, we are estimating $665,074 increase in revenue expectancy for '26. Next. This is the '26 general fund expenditure summary and all of the different departments, the percentage of expense for the general fund. Next. And this is the revenue, the expenditure comparison between '25 and '26. So '25 is amended as to date. Of course, we do expect amendments to the '25 budget through 60 days after year end of '26. Next. And we've added the multi-fund grant, the multi, the multiple grant fund to the budget document. We are expecting about $319,762 in grant funds so far. $125,000 of that, which you'll see as the net revenue expenditures, is a rollover of the 2026 LMIG funds to be rolled over to '27. And you'll hear a little bit more about that from the city engineer later today. The economic mobility specialist funding is included in the grant fund. We expect $345,000 over the next 30 months with the expectation of $107,612 proposed for expenditures in this year. And then we have, of course, an explanation for the other grant funds. Next. We have presented a budget for SPOS 1 and SPOS 2 program funding in the amount of $4,896,960. Next. This, this is, this is, this includes $632,074 in SPOS 1 transportation program expenses, and we have the project listed out to include contracted amounts so far, the contract remaining, and additional funds, excuse me, required for the project as estimated. Next. This is SPOS 2 transportation program expenses in the amount of $2,630,000. So total transportation project funding expectation is $2,695,074. Next. And this is a federal seizure fund. We have not budgeted new funds, new proceeds for the fund. We have really no way of knowing what the expectation will be. We have rolled over what we believe will be the general fund, the fund balance for the federal seizure funds and have expended line item expenditures against the, the funds that will be rolled over in the amount of $32,400. Next. The debt service and all these other funds have previously been presented, so I won't go over those again tonight. There's no change to date in the budgets proposed for these other funds. Next. We do have an increase in the annexation study. We previously presented $50,000. We have a proposed bid award tonight in the amount of $87,000. It is included in the amended proposal for tonight. Next. And we'll take any questions.
At this time, it is open for public hearing. So we have anyone who is scheduled to speak. Clerk Mitchell?
Dean Moore.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. I'd like to encourage you to, Madam Mayor, keep the community center in mind for all the good things that they do for our community, to make sure that they're included in our budget to make sure they continue to support our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Wait, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Michelle.
Don't worry about it.[882.12][882.12](Laughter) Michelle Musurjin, 3756 Poplar Drive. I just had a couple of questions on the ARPA funding. I understand it's going to end in 2026. What's going to happen to those positions that are on that grant?
Yes, ma'am. Are we taking questions at this point, or during discussion?
It is strictly comments, so.
So that's a comment I have unconcerned about. You know, this is ending. We have people on here over, you know, $400,000. Are those other programs going to go away? Or do you have another revenue source? Because I'm sure you knew there had to be some sustainability plan in place. And then my other question was on planning and development. I'm just wondering what kind of revenue was coming in from any of the, I forgot the name of the, it was something that had to do with checking buildings and, what do you call that? I'm sorry, I don't have it.
If, if it comes back to you, you can write a note and we'll make sure to be mindful of it.
Yeah. It has to do with the maintenance and repair of buildings that they're habitable and that the code enforcement people are going out and doing their thing. And I just want to know, is that budget line for revenue increasing, or is it decreasing? Because hopefully it's increasing. And I also noticed that was a big jump in the rev, in the expenses for the planning and development.
What was that last part?
There was a, a jump in the overall expenses for the planning and development department from last year to this, to '25 to '26. And I'm assuming a lot of that is salaries also.
We'll, we'll talk through it.
That's a comment. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for it?
There are no other citizens signed up for public hearing here, but we do have a list online.
Okay. Do we have anyone in here who would like to speak on this item? Anyone in here who would like to speak on this item? Anyone in the building who would like to speak on this item? Hearing none and is closed for the public in, in here. Do we have anyone online who would like to speak on this item? You can raise your hand. Do we have anyone who would like to speak on this item? Anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, this item is closed in terms of the public hearing. We'll move to the next public hearing item, which is B, to hear public comments on an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 7, to add a definition of townhomes and amend definitions for duplex, triplex, quadruplex, and multifamily dwellings. We'll start off with our Planning Director and Economic Director, Mr. Edwards, to kick it off.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So on this one, the first change we have here is to dwelling multifamily. We're increasing that definition to be five units as opposed to three dwelling units. So that's the first change there. We're adding a definition for dwelling townhome to read attached single-family dwellings with a minimum of three and a maximum of seven single-family dwellings that are attached horizontally by a common sidewall with each dwelling unit being designed to be occupied by not more than one family. We are adjusting dwelling triplex to include at the last part of the definition to read that may be attached horizontal, horizontally and/or vertically. And they've always been allowed to be attached horizontally and vertically. We're just strictly putting it in there to differentiate from townhomes. And in dwelling two-family duplex, we're adding the same statement to the end to read that may be attached horizontally or vertically. And then we're redefining dwelling quadplex to be more in line with the definitions of triplex and duplex to read a building containing not more than four kitchens designed to be occupied by not more than four families living independently of each other that may be attached horizontally and/or vertically. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And, James, I just want to make sure from a mic check, can you make sure everything is fine with this mic in the front, so we don't have feedback?
Can you, is he trying to speak into the microphone?
Okay.
Can you speak a little, speak a little bit away from, can you speak into the microphone?
Okay, perfect. So with that, Clerk Mitchell, who do we have signed up?
Tim Hall.
Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Tim Hall. I live at 3525 Bacon Street. And my comments apply to not only item B, but B through F. So could I just make my comments on B and let them apply?
You, you can, if it applies to all.
Yes, ma'am.
You can, one shot, knock it out then if you would.
Will do. Thank you. I oppose the zoning ordinance changes, most particularly the ones to add overly dense townhomes to my NR3 neighborhood and duplexes and multifamily units to NR2 neighborhoods. This relates to agenda items B through F. If anyone says that agreement or consensus was reached with NR3 neighbors on the proposed ordinance changes, they are not trailing the truth. Period. I have personally been to every meeting on this subject for the past 18 months, and no agreement or consensus was reached. NR3 neighbors have attempted to engage in dialogue with Jamie and his supporters to reach reasonable compromise, but Jamie's approach is to decide what is best for us based on his unilateral decisions and his personal agenda. Jamie's unilateral decisions are not what we want. The purpose of the zoning ordinance changes compared and modeled the proposed Clarkson Townhome zoning density standards after what Stone Mountain, Brookhaven, and Tucker allow. Clarkson is not too similar to Brookhaven or Tucker, but Stone Mountain has some similarities to Clarkson, and they're close on proximity. Stone Mountain has the highest density standard for townhomes among the three other cities at 18 units per acre. I asked Richard Edwards to help me find a real-life example of townhomes in Stone Mountain that fall under the, their MRZ zoning standard, which is most similar to Clarkson's proposed zoning changes. And he pointed me toward the Westgate Townhomes on Memorial Drive near the Westgate entrance to Stone Mountain Park. What a revelation. I invite you to spend a few minutes driving east, down East Montsulion, and then turning left on Memorial Drive at the Stone Mountain Village Bakery, to see the future of Clarkson NR3 townhomes. This is a real townhome project that exists, not a speculative project from Jamie or from NR3 neighbors on what might be built. It is the best approximation I could find of what will exist under their proposed overly dense Clarkson Townhome standards. It is just a few minutes' drive away from us. It is not a pretty. There are 84 townhome units on approximately four acres of land that border the project, one border of the project is Memorial Drive, which is a busy quarter, approximately one tenth of a mile from the entrance of Stone Mountain Park's Westgate. The townhomes also border, and their entrance is in a residential neighborhood on Rankin Street. The Rankin Street neighborhood has modest single-family homes and a few duplexes similar to my NR3 neighborhood. The units are distressed, blighted, not well-maintained, and mostly vacant. There were 21 cars clustered around a few of the 82, 82 townhome units at 6:45 AM last Wednesday. I stayed there for three hours. The occupancy rate appears between 30 and 40%. That means the vacancy rate is between 60 and.
Top.
I'm up.
Yep. You need to come back.
If I could, I, I'll finish. Yes, ma'am. I'll come out, come back for C.
Come, come back later.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have anyone else scheduled to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else in the room scheduled to speak on this item?
Michelle Musurjin.
All right.
Michelle Musurjin, 3756 Poplar Drive. I'm going to comment on three, A, B through F, like Tim's.
So did you, do you want to just, let's do this, because you got some powerful comments y'all want to make, right? So I want to make sure that, let's, let's stay focused on if, if you have, if you want to speak on multiple, you can.
I can do one by one.
Okay, so we're going to do, we're going to take care of one at a time. So let's worry about the definitions of townhomes, duplexes, triplex, quiplex. And then when you want to come back, we'll come back for C, okay?
I'm neutral on that.
Okay, you're neutral. Thank you for the neutrality. Anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Dean Moore.
Dean Moore? About the definition. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a new concept to me, to have duplexes that are over-under. Not completely new, but I really don't see any issues with that personally. I've known a few houses that were over-under type houses as they remodeled that way. And seemed like it, it fit with the neighborhood that it was in. I don't know how many we have in Clarkston already, but it may be a viable solution to some people's attempt to increase their income or the value of their property. So I'm not, not too concerned about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak, signed up?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? Anyone else in this room who would like to speak? Anyone else in this room who would like to speak? Hearing none, it is closed for the public in the room. Online, do we have anyone else who wanted to speak? Anyone else who wanted to speak online? Anyone else who wanted to speak online? Hearing none, this item is now closed, and we will proceed to Item C, which is to hear public comments on an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 6, at, I mean Article 4, to add, amend the use table to expand the allowance of duplex townhomes in home occupation. And this will also be Mr. Edwards.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So to briefly go over this, this text was proposing the following changes. One, to allow duplexes in the NR2 with a conditional use permit in the RC zoning district by right. Two, allow townhomes in the TC zoning district with approval from City Council through a conditional use permit. Three, allow home occupations in the NRCD and RC zoning districts. And that last one there, our current code states that, in Section 407 states, in all residential zoning districts, any building used for residential occupancy may conduct to home occupancy use. But our use table did not show that, so just making sure our code is coordinated there. And these recommendations for increases in town, duplexes and townhomes are compatible with the comprehensive plan for TC and RC zone lots within the mixed-use, future land use district and with the NR2 zone lots within the single-family future land use designation. And further, they also fall within the purpose and intent statements found within each of the zoning districts, which I'm happy to read if you would like. So the NR2 zoning district purpose and intent is the NR2 zoning district is intended for single-family detached townhomes and attached residence on smaller lots where large lots, where large amounts of open space are not required and/or desired. The NRCD purpose statement is the NRCD zoning district is primarily intended for multifamily housing developments. However, the district allows for a mix of housing types, including single-family attached townhomes and detached structures, as well as limited institutional and personal service uses that would be convenient to nearby residents. The RC purpose and intent statement is the RC zoning district is intended to allow converted residential structures with commercial uses to coexist with residential uses. Commercial uses will be limited in order to maintain the current balance and aesthetic in the surrounding area. Residents converted to office uses are acceptable when kept at current scale. And on this one, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval with a 3-2 vote. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, so at this time, we will open this item, and we're going to specifically talk about the tables that were mentioned by Mr. Edwards. So who do we have signed up for this item?
Tim Hall.
Did you want to speak on this one, or you want to wait?
I would rather wait until he even, if that's more specific and relevant to my comments.
Okay.
Dean Moore.
Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Madam Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Meeting the other day was contentious. A lot of people are against this process. The, one thing I heard a lot was putting the cart before the horse. There was mention of future planning, that we didn't necessarily have that option in the NR2 neighborhoods as they stand at this point. But it was for future planning, in the event that we ever do any annexation. My personal feeling about annexation is, we probably won't be able to do any annexation for about 20 years. There's a distaste in the community around us over our politics and our lack of leadership and lack of guidance in the overall community. And I think our zoning kind of reflects that. We, we have a pretty good standard zoning that offers a lot of options in many different areas. areas of the city, and to expand this into those neighborhoods would really destroy that basic consistency we have with the city. I'd like to put this off, too. We can do a further comprehensive study and get the different neighborhoods to come out and, or to go to them and actually plan with them as what they would like to see in the future for their neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. So do we have anyone who may live in NR2 that's here that may or in these areas? I want to make sure that you have a chance to speak. So do we have anyone else signed up?
Michelle Masurjin.
Now, did you want to speak on this item, or you want to be neutral? This is about the table? Okay, come on.
On Michelle Masurjin, thirty-seven, fifty-six Poplar Drive, I'm asking the council not to approve this text edit. There is currently only one small area on the zoning map as NR2 district. The NR2 zone is made up of three planned residential communities, which are already zoned for smaller, compact lots. There is minimal opportunity for middle housing in this area. The property owners have an opportunity to add ADUs or subdivide their lot. There is still not a lot of opportunity, again, for middle housing. It appears to be a poor infill plan in an established, stable, single-family detached community. There is no immediate need to add this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else come up?
Robin Sands, thirty-seven, thirty-zero Carroll Park Drive. I think our current, wow, that's loud. I think our current plan has competing interests, and what we're hearing here tonight and what we heard in the planning and zoning meeting was a very one-sided presentation of what Clarkston's interests are. We want density. We want more people. We want to have more, and then suddenly townhouses are the new starter home for everybody. However, our plan also calls to protect single-family homes. Our plan also wants to encourage ownership. We have, just recently in October, the owner of a lot in NR1 neighborhood put in an application to rezone it to NR2. Single lot, .4 acres in the middle of NR1, and it was approved by the city. He wanted to put six townhomes on this lot right next to Forty Oaks, and he also applied for a PUD to go along with that. It took a battle to get that to stop. Once again, we keep having the same battles, and we keep hearing the same ideas over and over and over again. And we hear, we have people who are giving us lectures on how everybody has been to meetings, and we've all agreed, and we did not agree. Every meeting I've ever been to has been a large turnout of people saying they don't want this. Clarkston is not like other cities. We're not Stone Mountain, we're not Brookhaven, we're not Tucker, we're not, who was it last year? Houston or LA. We're not Austin. We want someone to look at Clarkston and figure out what we have here, what our capabilities and our unique things are, what will draw people to our city, what will bring business to the city, what will make people want to buy homes in Clarkston. None of the things on this entire list are going to do that. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wanted to speak? I see standing in the next person behind her.
Hi. Hi, I'm Jean Hilliard, Cranford Drive. I just, I haven't been coming for a while because I thought that this had been tabled pretty much, because repeating what she just said, every time we met about it, there was never a conclusion or an agreement. And one thing that had come up in the past was how we have ninety-five percent of Clarkston in multi-unit housing and five percent that are single homes. Can we just leave them alone? Stop trying to shove townhomes and apartments in the five percent of Clarkston that is single homes. Thank you.
Thank you. We had someone else who wanted to speak?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I just wanted to speak to that five percent.
I'll speak to your name.
Samia Abdullah.
Okay.
I wanted to speak to that five percent that is single-family homes. That five percent cannot remain the five percent. It has to change. The community that lives here also needs to be part of that five percent. So the old business of Clarkston is not going to be the future of Clarkston. Those communities that came here have worked hard, also want to be part of that five percent ownership, whether it's multifamily, townhomes, whatever. It's not a zero-sum game, but we want to be part of that five percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak who wants to speak on this item? Anyone else? All right, going once, anyone else who likes to speak on this item in the room? Going twice, if you're very compelled to say anything? Going three times, and with that, we will close public comments inside the room. Online, does anyone online would like to speak on this item? Does anyone online would like to speak on this particular item? Anyone online that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none, this item is closed in terms of the public hearing, which now brings us to D, to hear public comments on an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Articles Three, Section 305, to amend residential zoning district dimensions requirements in the NR1, NR2, and NR3 zoning district. Mr. Edwards.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So on this one, these text amendments include, one, increasing the floor area ratio for NR2 to zero-point-six and NR3 to point-one-zero. This would keep these zoning districts in line with their intent, as NR2 is medium-density residential and NR3 is high-density residential. Two, creating a minimum twenty percent open space requirements for townhomes in NR2 and NR3 zoning districts. Three, creating a minimum site area, which will be the minimum area required for a new lot in the applicable zoning district. This also includes reducing the total site area for NR3 lots from five thousand square feet to four thousand square feet. Four, updating the minimum lot size to include one thousand nine hundred and fifty square-foot lots for townhomes in the NR2 and NR3 zoning districts, which is approximately twelve units per acre, based on the math that I've worked out with several people on this project. And this includes reducing the minimum lot size for single-family detached duplex and quadriplex to four thousand square feet in the NR3 zoning district. Five, creating a minimum site width, which would be the new width of any new lot created. Six, updating the minimum lot width for duplex townhomes in the NR2 zoning district, and updating the minimum lot widths for duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhomes in the NR3 zoning district. Seven, updating the minimum front setback for duplex and townhomes in the NR2 zoning district to twenty-five feet, and updating the minimum front yard setback for duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhomes in the NR3 zoning district to fifteen feet. Eight, creating a ten-foot minimum building separation requirement for townhomes in the NR2 and NR3 zoning district. And nine, adding a footnote at the bottom of the table, three-point-four, to clarify zero-foot setback between attached units. And through your, through my staff report here, I do have comparisons to policy-only of some neighboring cities that are similar to us. Any type of comparison to a physical neighborhood or ones that were built here, because I never want to assume the development codes of other cities, nor do I want to take the time to do open records requests for variances, PUDs, and all that stuff for another city that I can't interpret properly. So I've got the breakdowns there for you. If you have any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer those. And with this one, staff does find that it meets the intent of the zoning code, the comprehensive plan, and the ARC Housing Summit data that was presented to, to the city.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, Clerk Mitchell, who did we have signed up for?
Tim Hall.
All right. We've got three minutes.
Thank you. And just to clarify before I pick up where I left off, our objection is the density level to the townhomes, not to the townhomes themselves. If they conform with the characteristics of the existing neighborhood in terms of density, I think that we could all get much more comfortable. I was paying a [inaudible] West Mountain, and I left off that the occupancy rate appears to be between thirty and forty percent. That means the vacancy rate is between sixty and seventy percent. There are many legal or foreclosure notices posted on the doors. It [inaudible] even the slumlord absentee owners can't rent these things. The absentee owner percentage is greater than sixty percent. Corporations, LLCs, et cetera. I have the tax data, if anyone would like to see it. But many owners [inaudible] abandoned their units or just walked away. The average [inaudible] value of the nine units in Building M is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's a low of ninety-four thousand and a high of one-sixty-three. There are ten buildings ranging in size from six to nine units each. Most owners, again, [inaudible] absentee owners, LLCs, or corporations that do not occupy the units. I spoke to one resident outside. His name was Ernest Tough. He lived in Building M. He came outside while I was there. He was a renter, and he confirmed that most of the units are indeed vacant. In summary, these overly dense townhomes are distressed, depressed, and the project is not a role model that any city should be following. I am betting that the City of Stone Mountain wishes they could have a do-over on this dense, blighted, and mostly abounding townhome project. I wish I had more time to tell you more of what I've found, and I'm happy to talk to anybody that wants to offline, but three minutes goes by fast. Please vote no on the proposed zoning ordinance changes that would allow this overly dense mess to be built in Clarkston. These things are more dense than the multifamily units that exist in our neighborhoods, and that's what we object to. This type of density would be devastating to our NR3 neighborhood for generations to come. The City of Clarkson can and should do better than this. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for this?
Dean Moore.
Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Madam Mayor, I've been to the townhouses Mr. Hall is referencing, and I agree wholeheartedly with everything he just mentioned, that it is a blighted area. And considering that we're rushing into this, I think it's time to step back and take a look at what's really happening here. I'm not going to describe it to you at this time, but I think that we're really bending over backwards to get developers into the city. It was mentioned at the planning and zoning meeting the other day that this was going to solve our deficit problem with whatever our current financing, financial situation is, and that's falsehood. This is not going to help us out at all. Thank you.
Okay. And who else did we have?
Michelle Masurjin.
Michelle Masurjin, I'm asking the council to vote no on this text edit. These zoning dimensional lot changes are putting the cart before the horse and are band-aid to the larger issue confronting Clarkston. In the City of Clarkson Housing Summit, the 2040 Plan, Comprehensive Plan, and other reports that were done, the top housing challenges are housing affordability, the quality of the housing stock, and landlord accountability. I recommend that the common council convene an affordable housing task force to research and develop recommendations for new policies, programs, initiatives, for the creation of workforce and affordable housing, and to preserve the existing affordable housing units already in Clarkston. It has been shown that private development does exclude low and moderate-income households from all areas of the city and to the public's detriment, often causing the destruction and replacement of existing affordable housing. I also recommend that Clarkson look into establishing neighborhood planning units. They are usually the official avenue for residents to express concerns and provide input in developing plans to address the needs of each neighborhood, as well as to receive any updates from the city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else did we have sign to speak?
Vernetta Hill.
Thank you. Vernetta Hill, I am in the N2 area. I live on McLaren Drive, and I haven't attended very few, very many meetings on this subject, but just in a quick overview, I don't see how this benefits the people of Clarkson, and it certainly doesn't benefit the people of N2. It seems that it opens the door for more developers to come in and bring in more renters in our area, which is certainly something that we don't need. And I can't imagine smaller lots. I am on a tiny lot on McLaren Drive, and I can hear my neighbors snore. So I can't imagine anything smaller than what we have, and the mention of ten feet from one house to the next is just something that I just can't even fathom. I think there needs to be more consideration, more investigation, more, more look into this before we rush into it again. And again, I have heard quadriplex, triplex. I just can't even imagine it in my area. I can't imagine it in N3. So again, I think that more investigation needs to be made before we rush into this.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for this? Clerk Mitchell. Okay. Hearing no one else signed up for this, do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Yes, come up.
Hi, Jean Hilliard, Cranford Drive. So we had a lot of diagrams and things last time we were talking about this, and it's so difficult to follow, N2, this many feet, that many feet, and really, we do need to hold these public meetings again, where everything can be shown on a screen and explained to the people so that they understand what's going on. Also, to speak to what the woman who spoke after me said about the five percent, why don't we, Clarkston, think about looking at some of the apartments that are not being taken care of and creating multi-unit homes there, starting over? We don't have to encringe upon the five percent. We're, again, talking about ninety-five percent of Clarkston. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you. And if you're looking for some seats, there's some in the front. Don't be afraid. We're all family up in here. With that, do we have anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, please come up.
Robin Sands, thirty-seven, thirty, Carroll Park. I think I've brought this up at every one of these meetings that I've been to over the last several years. There are empty lots in Carroll Park. We have empty lots all around the city. By all means, build those lots. We do need more housing. We need more single-family homes so people have an option to buy a home where they want to live and grow a family. We don't want to exclude anyone, but we need to be more creative about how we solve this problem. That's all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this particular item? Do we have anyone else come forward?
Hi, my name is Cora Hall. I live at thirty-seven, fifty Market Street. I grew up in Clarkston. My family's been here my entire life. This whole process has felt off. It feels like there's a big push, a lot of loud voices in the city government pushing for more density, and all I'm hearing from my neighbors and the people who are also showing up to meetings is that they don't want that. We have density in Clarkston. We are mostly NR3. I don't think that this, right now, is the answer. The comprehensive plan is being redone next year, if I have that right. Why do we have to push it through now? Why not take these ARC recommendations, which I respect, and put that with our new comprehensive plan and come up with a big picture that's going to benefit everyone in Clarkston? I would also like to see the city's communication improve. I would also like to see the city's communication improve. I'm not getting, I'm signed up to the email list, but I'm not getting all of the notifications for meetings, and the website is really hard to navigate. So I'm against it, not forever, but I'd like to see it done very thoughtfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, we'll close this item for the residents and attendees in, in the room. Online, do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, this item is now closed for public, the public hearing, which means now we'll move to E, and that's to hear public comments on ordinance to amend the City of Clarkson zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article Three, to update development standards for townhomes in NRCD, in, in RC, and TC zoning districts. Mr. Edwards.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the first one on this would be amending minimum lot size to minimum site area, which will allow townhome developments to have a minimum site area overall, but will still allow for a smaller lot size for the individual townhome units. E increases the maximum building height in the TC zoning district from five stories, seventy-five feet, to seventy stories, one hundred feet. Three classifies minimum site area for townhomes at five thousand square feet in NRCD zoning district. Four reduces the RC site area from seven thousand two hundred square feet to five thousand square feet. Five included minimum site width requirements, which reflect the existing lot width requirements. Seven, updates to the minimum lot width requirements for townhomes in the NRCD zoning district to fourteen feet. Eight, updates the front yard require, setback requirements for townhomes in the NRCD zoning district to ten feet. Nine, updates to the side setback requirements for townhomes in the NRC zoning districts. Ten, creates a minimum ten-foot building separation for townhomes in the NRCD zoning district. And lastly, adds a footnote at the bottom of Table 3.6 to clarify zero-foot setback between attached townhome units. And on this one, staff recommends approval, and it does fall in line with the zoning ordinance, the Comprehensive Plan, and the Atlanta Regional Commission Housing Summit. And on this one, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five oh for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards. At this time, who do we have signed up? Clerk Mitchell.
Tim Hall.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Madam Mayor, this again is putting the cart before the horse. You know, Clarkston has a long history of accepting, or actually bending over backwards for developers for certain projects. Carroll Park was the first one I'm familiar with that still has not been completely built out, so we've got some options there for people to do that. But they had many variances for lot sizes, things like that. And more recently, the East Avenue project, that's not built out. It's been several years. Until we can hone our skills in understanding what developers are saying and what they really mean, we're going to continue to have bad projects. And I've always felt that the town center was something that we would try to enhance the, the spirit of Clarkston, to develop it in a certain way. And as we continue to downsize and tear down our standards to try to get developers in, even in the town center area and the NRCD and RC, I, I feel like we really need to get a grip on what we're looking for, what we're talking about, before we start tearing this down and allowing the third-rate developers to come in and make their fortune on the backs of the Clarkston people. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else did we have? Clerk Mitchell.
Michelle Mussergen.
Michelle Mussergen, 37 Poplar Drive. While the city is looking to improve traffic through the Safe Streets Program and green space through the Greenway Study and updating the Comprehensive Plan, these zoning changes should be put on hold until these other plans and reports are finalized. If anything, Clarkston should be investigating exclusionary zoning, density bonus, and other ways to ensure percentage of these high-density dwellings have a portion that is affordable. One recommendation would be a density bonus through a special exception ordinance, which would require any newly built dwellings, such as triplexes, triplexes to multifamily, to, in order for the developer to get these reduced lot sizes, that they would have to provide affordable rent based on sixty percent of the AMI of the City of Clarkson for all the dwellings in your mixed-use areas, NRCD, RC, and TC. So I would make that recommendation, and I would ask you to vote no on this text edit.
Okay. Thank you. Who else did we have signed to speak? No one else signed to speak on this item. However, if anyone in the room would like to speak, feel free at this time. Raise your hand if you want to speak. Does anyone in the room, please come up? And then, Samia, you, Samia was first.
Samia Abdalukh, mini advocate, wanted to speak to the size lot. I think the recommendation from the, the study, I think it was Atlanta Regional Commission who did the study, I think they came up with recommendations. Also, I like the idea of having a, a community groups. So the question I have is, how do we marry community benefit agreements that the community want to see in, in neighborhoods? Whether it's a crooked road area, whether it's certain, whatever neighborhoods? And also what the developers would like to imagine in order to create a win-win? So again, I think it's very important to have a community benefit agreement, so therefore you can attract the right developers to create the mixed use that is going to be looking at multiple, multiple units, but also our communities, also large numbers of families that tiny lots might not. So it has to kind of look into, how do we reimagine this with centering the community needs?
Robin Sands, Carroll Park Drive, again. Since Dean brought up the quality of the building standards and the developers we're bringing into Clarkston, I'm just going to point out that my home in Carroll Park is by far the most expensive home I've ever owned. And I don't mean by the purchase price, I mean by cost of ownership. The repairs and the issues that I have found in that house, which was just built in 2015, have been extensive. Whoa. My house was not, oh. My house was not grounded. I have poorly done workmanship inside. We have things that are not level. I've spent money on this house that I shouldn't have had to spend. We're not doing anyone any favors by getting these cheap guys in to build houses. And I also want to point out that we've already seen that new development is already higher prices than what we have existing in the, in the neighborhood. So this is very backwards, and I think it explains why this justification for why we need density keeps changing. First, it was for affordability. Then it was because we don't have enough houses. And now it's because it's going to miraculously reduce our taxes. None of this makes sense. There's no logic to it. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to make a comment or speak on this item? Do we have anyone else who'd like to make a comment or speak on this item? Do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed for everyone in the room. Online, do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone who'd like to hear, speak on this item? Hearing none, this public hearing item is now closed, which brings us to F, and that is to hear public comments on an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, Appendix A, number six, to amend the off-street parking requirements.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Also, the first part of this is to remove Section 607A and B. Section A establishes that the parking spaces shall not exceed one hundred percent of the minimum, so currently in our code, we have parking exacts. We can't do anything above or beyond that. And then B, just, it's redundant, saying the number of off-street parking required by user is follows, which is already in the headline of the preceding section there. And then in the parking requirements, what we are proposing here is for town, apartments, townhomes, condominium, oh, not townhomes, sorry, for apartments, condominiums, and other multifamily attached uses, it would be point eight-five spaces per studio unit, point nine spaces per one-bedroom unit, one-point-six-five spaces per two-bedroom unit, two spaces per three-bedroom units, and zero-point-one-five spaces per unit for guest parking. And these recommendations come from the Institute of Transportation Engineers and their residential parking suggestions. Further on this for cottage housing, we're going to change that to one space per dwelling unit as regulated in Section 529, and include zero-point-one-five spaces per unit for guest parking. And then residents, including duplex, triplex, and quadplex, will be one space per dwelling unit and zero-point-one-five spaces per guest parking. Then townhomes will be one-point-five spaces per dwelling unit. Single-family residents detached will be two spaces per dwelling unit, and accessory dwelling units is being added as one space per ADU pursuant to Section 413. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for that. And we, do we have anyone signed up? Clerk Mitchell for this item.
Tim Hall.
All right. Nothing further? Okay.
Dean Moore.
All right. We're going to see what's going on with the mic and then...
Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Madam Mayor, this again is looking at something that's difficult to comprehend. The different rationalizations that I've heard is that before you know it, nobody's going to be using cars anymore. I, I believe in planning for pedestrian safety. I believe that road diets are good to slow things down. It's good for business, good for safety, good for people. But parking is something that is very contentious with people. If you take away the parking on a, on a basis like this for housing, you're going to have people parking in the streets at the neighbor's house. And it's really going to clog up the streets. We don't have that ability here, no matter what your standards are nationwide. We're a, a much more denser community, and I, I don't think it's right to, to promote this type of development without having proper parking for the people that live there. It's just going to add to the problems of the city. It's going to inhibit our safety that we've been working on for years to try to, we've got the Safe Streets for All now, we're trying to reduce all accidents and injuries down to zero. I think by taking away parking spaces and making people park, or find other parking somewhere else, some of the alternatives, like for the last project that you all were deliberating over, was to possibly use Carroll Park Drive as overflow parking, or Forty Oaks for overflow parking. We were talking about tiny homes. They talked about using the Thrift Town parking, or the Market Street, Vaughn Street parking, or the Refuge Coffee for parking, for the residents, or for when their friends come over, or when they, they might have two cars per unit because there's two people living there. So I, I, I think all this stuff needs to be looked at and be postponed and put off until we have a better grip on what we're doing so that we can attract people that want, might want to be annexed into the city for future...
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak? No. Michelle, come on.
Michelle Mussergen, 3756 Poplar Drive. To reiterate one of the other comments, I do feel that any ordinance changes that are being proposed should be presented and designed to be user-friendly and feature diagrams and explanatory texts to ensure that it's understandable for everyone without requiring a planning, legal, or builder, a planning degree, a legal degree, or being a builder. For example, when you're talking about the section, Table 3.5 for dimensions, or Table 3.6, or Table 4.1 on dimensions, having, design dimensions, having some visual will really help to get, help folks to understand what's going on. With the parking, I would vote no unless it was included in a density bonus to tag along with affordable housing. So if you plan on building affordable housing, you can get reduced parking in those mixed-use districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, then the item is closed for the people in the room. Online, do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, then this item is closed for the public hearing. And so with that, that ends all of our public hearings. Thank you very much for your comments. We will make sure in some of the questions that you have, we will have responses, that we can address them with the additional item discussions. So with that, there are no presentations or administrative business. Five is public comments. Any member of the public may address questions or comments to the city council, referencing only agenda items after the mayor and council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. We'll move to O business, which is six, and we'll start with 6A to discuss the proposed fiscal year 2026 operating and enterprise budget with the city manager, Miller Thornton.
I just wanted to present the specific changes within general fund budget proposal for 2026. General fund revenue is reduced from ten million four hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars to ten million four hundred forty-five thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. This includes a transfer of ninety thousand dollars in ICMA grant fund revenue that has been moved to the multiple grant fund. Five thousand dollar increase in capital lease proceeds based on state contract pricing for that particular lease. Reserve fund balance allocation has been increased from thirty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars to seven, seventy-six thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars to balance the general fund budget. Expenditures are reduced from ten million four hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars to ten million four hundred forty-five thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. Within the mayor's department, one thousand special initiatives allocation has been reassigned to the travel line item of five hundred dollars and the education training line item of five hundred dollars. The same has been done within the council department. Each special initiative allocation for each of the six council members has been reassigned. Five hundred of that one thousand dollars has been assigned to each council member's travel line item. Five hundred dollars of that one thousand dollar special initiative has been assigned to each of the council members' education and training line item. These, of course, have resulted in no change in the total department expense appropriation. Administration Department expenditure... Administration Department expenditures, as revised, have been increased from $2,287,117 to $2,328,117. This includes an annexation study expense that has increased from $50,000 to $87,000 based on recommended bid award. The $5,000 that has been, this is, the $5,000 capital asset expense has increased based on contract pricing. Planning and Development Department expenditures have decreased from 1.3 million to 1.296 million. The economic mobility specialist position salary, travel, et cetera, has been reassigned to the multi-grant fund. And the Carson Community Center MOU expense for public and city-related use of the space has been added to the Communication Action Project expense line in the amount of $15,000. Other funds have also been added to the budget document as we spoke before the public hearing, and these are the changes that have been made, specific changes that have been made since initial presentation of the budget document.
Thank you. With that, at this time, let me put the timer on. Council, did you have any further comments on this item?
Madam Mayor, am I able to speak to some of the public comments?
Okay. Go ahead.
As I've mentioned, CCC, Community Center funding is added into the budget with regards to the question about American Rescue Plan Act funding. Presently, there is about $400,000 in salary expense in ARPA. Of course, once ARPA funding goes away, we have to reassign those expenditures to the general fund. We are working through analysis of our employment capacity and positions, looking at ways that we can, you know, make adjustments in the capacity of employment. Of course, again, without those funding, without that funding for ARPA, we'll have to compensate within the general fund expenditure category for the, for positions. I will say that during the 2025 military adoption, we also either decided not to fund vacant positions or to reduce a position capacity in the amount of about $500,000. So this $400,000 will be on top of the $500,000 that we have already reduced funding for as, as far as employment and human, human capital expense. What I will say is that the city, there's an expectation that programs and services increase because that's what our citizens want. In order to increase programs and services, that also often means larger increase for staffing in a scenario where he, where we have significantly reduced staffing. And so we are at this kind of catch-22. We have to take a real good look at our revenue portfolio and expense portfolio over the next year or so, and we're doing, again, doing a lot of analysis within our operations and administration of city functions. And so this is not a scenario that is uncommon to smaller cities, but we do have what I would say is described as, in the comment, that Houston has a problem, but instead, Clarkston has a problem. And so I would, you know, every opportunity that we get to present a resolution to this problem, we will do that and how we advise council about our plan forward.
Thank you for providing the feedback on those questions and comments. And again, council, do you have any comments at this time?
Madam Mayor, I do have one more. The expenditure category for community action projects has not increased or decreased. It's still at $58,000, but there are some proposed changes within the different event categories. One is the addition of the $2,000 for the Culture Fest, adding that to the Rice Festival. I think that the, are you not one of the... One of the reasons why is because we have, the Rice Festival is cultural, right? And then we haven't assigned a event narrative for the Culture Fest. If you want to keep the Culture Fest separate, I don't know of an event that we can pull off of that magnitude for $2,000, but we're free to leave it as it is. That's at the, that's at the, the will of the council. June 10th, we have reduced from $15,000 to $10,000. That is one of our larger events. And the additional $5,000 that is being reassigned to Martin Luther King Day event in the amount of $2,000, and then $3,000 for miscellaneous events throughout the year. We do have, we have our employee event that is budgeted within the administration line item, but like we saw just last weekend, we have retirement, so we have other things that come up during the year where we might want to do some type of event to benefit our, or a specific program initiative, and so we would like to have that contingency in. And that, that is all.
Okay. And for those changes, what do you need for us to do?
You can just tell me if you would agree with those. I mean, we can, we do have the ability to change them throughout the year. The budget allocation overall is not changing. It doesn't require overall budget consideration.
Okay. So are you, as a council, okay with what the changes or shifts with the community projects section? Is that, is okay? Okay? All right, sounds like a plan. Thank you very much, council. With that, I will close out for, for council comments at this time. And council, the community can come up now and provide any comments besides what you have from the hearing, okay, on this item? So do we have anyone else who wants to speak further on this item? Anyone else who'd like to speak?
I would like to address a question to Madam City Council, manager. If you could be able to, if you can consider, there's a space, where there is a space on Brockhead Road, where it could be a community meeting or a makeshift space for programming, get together. Most of the things that the staff say sometimes that there is not a place to meet the community because it is not a central space, and I was just driving here and I saw there's a lot of vacant spaces opposite Glen, I think it's called Glen Bridge, apartments. So all of those, there's a lot of vacancies over there, but I think that community really need to be met where they are, and that could be a consideration of what would that look like? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public who'd like to speak?
Michelle, Sergeant, I just have a question for the city manager. Is the downtown development authority budget increasing or decreasing? Are there any funding to help get some of those projects underway, or is all that under planning and development? And then I guess I just throw in there, if there's...
The night rest will look forward to taking over.
If there's, in the budget is, or discussion to do a downtown development plan, there's a specific focus for the town center, is there a plan for that?
Well, there, right. In the current budget, last year, ARPA fundings were, ARPA funding was established for subsidy of the DDA. This year, that is not included in the ARPA fund budget. We do have, on the other hand, a facilities master plan that will include what happens in our town center. Yes, ma'am.
And there will be a design component to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Anyone else? And so this item is closed, and we will vote on this at the Tuesday council meeting. We'll move to Item 6B, which is to discuss a resolution to request the Georgia General Assembly to adjust the Clarkston municipal boundaries to facilitate the delivery of municipal services, and that's Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so earlier this year, I brought this for the council and ended up getting deferred to today. So just in summary, pretty much what we have in Clarkston is a situation where a number of the properties in our city, the boundary line between the city and the county intersects the property itself. And so they're partially in the city and partially in the county. However, those properties are paying 100% Clarkston city taxes. So when it comes to the delivery of services, like when you call 911, who do they send to respond, or equally important, whether or not you're allowed to vote in the city to which you pay taxes, those boundary lines are really impactful. And so if your house is on the county side of your property and not in the city, even though you may have a homestead exemption and that's your primary dwelling place and you're paying 100% city taxes, right now, you are not eligible to vote in Clarkston municipal elections. So this affects between 20 to 25 different parcels. Over 17, I believe it's a little tricky kind of figuring out voters because you're only able to look at voter registration, but at least up to 17 of our vote, voters were ineligible to vote in Clarkston elections. And so this came up back in 2023. We had a situation where two of our community members on Nielsen Drive showed up to vote in the Clarkston municipal election, and while they had previously voted, municipal elections were turned away at the ballot box because they were told they were not in the Clarkston precinct. We just resolved, went through a long, long period, they asked to be deannexed from the city, went through a long drawn-out process to do that. That was actually not resolved by the county until, I believe, sometime in the last couple of months. I actually had to walk that through the process. And so what this is doing is it's a simple way of fixing the issue. No money is changing hands, so the county is not getting more or less, the city's not getting more or less in terms of tax revenue, but it makes sure that people are able to vote in the city to which they pay taxes, and there's no confusion when it comes to the delivery of municipal services, like police dispatch, things like that. One final point, just to illustrate this further, Foxstrel Apartments, which is on the southern end of the city between Jamison and DeBel, part of that property is within city limits, and another part of it is outside of city limits. The line actually goes through one of the buildings. And so that's a great example where, yeah, one entire parcel, it's partially inside and partially outside. So I'll take questions if anybody has any questions about this. I can give my recommendations, just as an update to what we would actually, there's a couple tweaks that we're, I think, would be advised to make to this moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Perkins, at this time. Council, do we have any comments for this particular item? Councilwoman Hood?
Thank you. Councilman Perkins, did you say that you, this is an update of the information that you prepared before?
No, the information is the same, which you'll see before you, is two different resolutions. The first is for 25 parcels, which includes some parcels that are in the Clarkston's district, which is 34 and 34A. However, the, at the time that we compiled this list, they were in the GIS system for the county. There was some ambiguity in terms of whether or not, or where that property line had been updated. The county at the time had told us that they did not have any information verifying that they were in the city, so they just couldn't find the document. So this is a simple way of fixing the issue. The second resolution is for, I believe, 20 parcels. Some concerns were raised at the last meeting as to why we would need to re-annex properties that we had already annexed. My recommendation of the 25 was it would, it would simplify it. Instead of handing multiple lists to DeKalb's GIS department, we can hand them one list with the blessing of the General Assembly. It just simplifies the process. If my colleagues are uncomfortable with that, the second resolution is for 20 parcels. That excludes the ones where there was a little bit of ambiguity in terms of whether or not we had already annexed them or not. If that makes sense.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the council?
If, I would need more information. I'm still concerned that we're asking the state legislature to annex property that we've already annexed. I think that, that isn't a good look. So if, perhaps you and I can speak before the next council meeting, but there were a number of concerns about this when it came up before, and so let's just plan to talk about it.
Do you mind sharing kind of the concerns that you have? Because we had some extensive conversations on that, and this sort of fits in a third area between annexation and deannexation, so...
Well, I think she said she wanted to talk to you after, so I wanted to make sure in terms of...
I just want to make sure if other people have similar questions, we can kind of get it out there just with the timeline.
If anybody else wants to be part of those conversations or whatever.
All right. So she said she'd talk to you after that. Anything else? Councilwoman Bell, thank you.
So the only question I'm going to ask is around Cleve Mark, Turk Street, and East Avenue. Is this the only solution that we have to go to the state legislature? This question is specifically for you, Stephen, because we annexed them in, and so they're saying that they don't have the record. So is that we didn't give them the records, or there was some issue or challenge there? I'm just trying to find, figure out how to help those five based off of whichever resolution we decide to move forward with.
Right. So Councilman Perkins mentioned that GIS is the department at DeKalb, that for our local purposes, at least presumptively, determines which parcels are municipal and which are not. If I'm understanding correctly, there's these five parcels where we believe that the Clarkston City Council took action on an application and annexed them, but that's not showing up at GIS. If those facts are accurate, then the city can pull the legislative action from when the annexation occurred, send that to DeKalb County GIS and say, hey, please, update your maps. It looks like you're showing these as unincorporated, but we annexed it. Now, I don't know, I didn't hear when those annexations occurred.
Fairly.
2024?
One.
Oh, 2021? So we should have that? I guess Ms. Mitchell would be able to say. And yeah, by all means, that, I mean, they, it's their administrative duty to have their map be accurate, and I'm sure they'd be happy to if they had the backup documentation.
Thank you for bringing that point up, Councilwoman Bell. Any other comments from the council? Okay? Hearing none, we'll now open this up to the public. So if anyone would like to speak on this item, please, at this time. Do we have anyone signed up, Clerk Mitchell? No? Okay. Anyone else at this time? Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Don't be afraid. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? With that, we will close this item for public comments.
That's one more. One more recommendation on this would be that, so we have the resolution and an attached letter. My recommendation would be that we expand, we write more than just a letter to Senator Kim Jackson, but also include our two DeKalb County Commissioners that represent us, as well as Representative Carla Grenner in the letters that we sent, just explaining the situation, helping them understand what it is we're trying to do.
Okay, all right. Thank you. With that, I'm going to... Okay, all right. Thank you. With that, I'm going to take it that this won't be on consent. Will this be on? Okay, not on consent. All right. We'll move on to 6C, which is to discuss the Forty Oaks property. And that, we'll start off with Mr. Seton, our Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, the Forty Oaks is a historic preservation house. And over the years, it suffered structural damage. And we sent out a bid, and got two bids from two contractors because of the exterior damage to the roof. We found out that there's also asbestos and there's lead on the side. So we got a bid to get it encapsulated, which will get the tarp, and will cover the whole roof area. The proposed tarp is vinyl, is PVC material, is highly recommended by FEMA. And the two quotes that we got was for JM Lee Construction. That was for $26,000. The other one was from Griffin, which was $36,275. Staff chose to go with JM Lee for the $26,000. But we was asking for $30,000 con- extra $5,000, $31,000 total contingency for any unexpected expenses that may be over the $26,000. And this will come out of a splash, too, which would come out of the Parks and Recreation category. And we'll get a 30-day NTP, Notice to Proceed, any day after the 30. It'll be a $250 day penalty.
Okay. So what you're providing us is a proposal or a bid that will encapsulate Forty Oaks.
Inside the roof.
In roof. And you had two bidders. And what you're presenting is the bid that was the $26,000, where you want us to increase that for contingency to $30,000.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay.
For any unexpected expenses.
Okay. Did I cover? Okay, all right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public could, you know, heard and everything. Thank you so much, Mr. Seton. With that, I know that we'd also said we needed to hear from the Friends of Forty Oaks at this time, too, as well. And I think Ms. Williams, Mrs. Williams, had something that she wanted to present to us in terms of what the Friends of Forty Oaks were planning to do in terms of the actual usage of, or future usage of, the park and grounds. So Ms. Williams, if you want to go ahead and do that part.
Hi, good evening, council. I think we've compiled some information and planning for you guys here, and hopefully it will answer a lot of questions. I'm Lisa Williams, Director of Friends of Forty Oaks. We are a nonprofit Friends of the Park group, much like a lot of the Friends of the Park groups you see around metro Atlanta. And we are supporting Forty Oaks Nature Preserve. Next, please. We are inspiring community stewardship through environmental restoration, nature and cultural preservation, and inclusive education, building a vibrant and sustainable hub for learning, connection, and environmental protection. We have five focus areas here: land and native plant stewardship, wildlife habitat and information, environmental education, heritage and historic preservation, community engagement and partnerships, volunteerism, and public stewardship. Next, please. We have ongoing cleanup and invasive plant removal efforts underway. We will replace non-native species with native plants that support pollinators and wildlife, create interpretive signage highlighting native species and Clarkston's ecological story, coordinate efforts with the City of Clarkston's Parks Department to ensure alignment with the city's Parks Master Plan, develop a native plant demonstration garden surrounding the historic building. Next. We're also working on installing and maintaining birdhouses, bat boxes, butterfly gardens, and bee habitats. We'll host seasonal wildlife watch events, bird counts, butterfly walks, frog calls, create interpretive trails linking natural areas and educational signage, and offer family-friendly environmental programs and workshops to include youth and seniors. Next, please. We're collaborating with the Clarkston Historic Preservation Commission as it works towards certifying a historical district that includes the Forty Oaks property. We support the preservation of the architectural and cultural integrity of the historic farmhouse. We'll collaborate with HPC on historic storytelling about Clarkston's development, early settlers, and environmental transformation, and align all landscape and facility improvements with the Georgia Historic Preservation Standards. All of those is in support of HPC. Next, please. We have hands-on learning through partnerships with City of Clarkston Parks and Rec. Hopefully, we, some of those are already in place. The Historic Preservation Commission, DeKalb County Master Gardeners, Georgia Native Plant Society, Atlanta Audubon Society, Georgia Audubon, Georgia Birds, Nature Conservancy, Georgia Forestry Commission, Trees Atlanta, Global Growers, Splinter Group. I'm going to stop there. The list is extensive. We have, we have already cultivated multiple partnerships on this list. And then we do have ongoing list of outreach that we are working on, and we'll keep the city updated on those. The historic Forty Oaks building will be a community learning hub for workshops, heritage exhibits, and volunteer training. Next, please. We'll continue to host monthly community volunteer days in coordination with Parks Department, engage residents, schools, and civic groups in ongoing restoration and maintenance, create a Friends of Forty Oaks stewardship ambassador program to train community members in invasive removal, native planting, and wildlife observation. We'll recognize our volunteers publicly through signage, social media, and city events. Next, please. Here, we are presenting a table of how this all ties in with shared outcomes in conjunction with the city initiatives. I know we have a Parks Master Plan coming up, and we believe that Forty Oaks will serve as a pilot site for nature-based learning, heritage preservation, and sustainability. This will result in a model project showcasing integrated park and preservation planning. We are collaborating with HPC on design documentation interpretation for historic district certification. This will enhance recognition of Clarkston's cultural and environmental heritage. We're continuing to promote native plantings, composting, water stewardship. We also, I didn't mention, but obviously Global Growers is in the area, and we have spoken with them about different initiatives that we can work with them on as well. We believe this will create a more resilient and eco-conscious citywide park system. We'll offer accessible, inclusive, environmental programs for families, youth, and seniors. And we'll enjoy a greater community connection to green spaces. Next, please. Here, we have some.
Sorry, excuse me. Point of word, I'm trying to, I may be missing something. I'm trying to track how this pertains to the agenda item. Because this is about the organization, which it sounds like y'all are doing great work.
Yeah.
But that's not what's in front of us right now.
Yeah, I believe that.
Well, I'll, I'll help you out. One of the things that came up from the last time that we met was that you'd come back to provide this information. That's why, if you notice, it says to discuss, to discuss the Forty Oaks property. So it's, it's not specifically just to Mr. Seton's item, but also this was a part of what was said before.
I don't believe that's the case. I believe the item, the agenda item that we deferred was specifically related to a $36,000 contract.
It was the $36,000 contract. But part of that was for the Friends of Forty Oaks to come back and talk about what their plan was going to be.
Related to the specific building, or to?
To the usage of the grounds, because that came up that a year ago, that was a concern about what we were going to do, because we delayed it last year in terms of the demolition. And so part of that was for the Friends of Forty Oaks, as well as the historic preservation, to talk about what their plans were going to be with the property. And how many more slides do you have?
I believe we have five. I can get through them quickly.
Okay.
All right. Next, please. I'll just let you guys, you can all get a copy of this, just for sake of time, if you want to see what's in progress, what we're working on and what we're planning on. It is all related to the entire property with a planned usage for the historic home. Next, please. This is our year-two action plan, just following the year-one slide, continuing to support the historic district, align with the master plan, host various events, build a membership and funding structure. Next, please. Here, we have some items that we would like to work to partner, partner with the city on. A partnership agreement with Parks and HPC, maybe in the form of a memorandum of understanding would be in order. We'd like to align interpretive plans with HPC and preservation, sync our event calendar with the cities. We can co-host events. I'm trying to move quickly so we can go on to the next slide. Expected outcomes, by the end of our year-two plan, we will improve the biodiversity and restore native habitats. Forty Oaks becomes a key outdoor learning hub, integrated into Clarkston's emerging historic district. Have an increased participation and stewardship. We're going to work on membership and funding programs. And those do tie back to the structure, the historic structure there. So that is kind of why we're here. Next slide, please. And just would like to invite you guys all to our current and ongoing events. We are, we do Second Saturdays at Forty Oaks. Saturday, December 13th, we'll have an invasive removal and forest cleanup. And January 10th, we'll have a Woody Invasive Workshop. And Georgia Forestry Commission will join us on that. And then in February, for Lecter Park Month, we will be doing educational and birdhouse building, where Clarkston families can register to learn about birds in the park, in our parks, including Forty Oaks and other green spaces, and we will build birdhouses. Next, please. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, great job. Thank you. Okay, so with that, you can, you can go ahead, because that's all you were doing, was going to present it. So with that, in terms of the, the proposed bid, are there any questions as it relates to that proposed bid? Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm speaking to the mic.
On the, at the last meeting, Mr. Seton, we had a conversation about the preservation of the parts of the house that were not historic or would not fall within that category. And the young man said that he would have something for us today. Is he here? Did he give you anything? Okay.
Any other questions, City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. I know that there was a question about removing those parts of the home that were not, that were not considered historic. We did have some information from our city engineer that recommended not doing that. That's why we presented the bid for full encapsulation of the entire structure. And Mr. Kaiser can give a little bit more explanation from a technical standpoint about what demolition of those spaces may mean.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. We have no idea how that building was put together over the last 100 years. Four or five different additions over that period of time. Removing section of that structure now without a structural engineer actually intimately being involved with this would be, I think, a very big mistake. So I would suggest that we keep it as it is, depending on what council decides, but not begin moving any parts or segments of that house until we have a plan to do so.
Mayor.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So what is the potential outcome if we encapsulate, and it's already falling down, rotting, and all of that stuff?
So there are various degrees of deterioration of that house. First of all, the porch. That porch is not going to be able to be reused. It's a gone. It's going to be removed eventually. If the house stays intact, I mean, if the house remains as is, porch is gone. The back corner where the kitchen is, that will have to disappear. There are other additions that occurred after the initial structure, it was built 1989 or whatever it was, 1901, that are in pretty good shape for the most part. There's sections that were built in the 60s and 70s that are average, but it doesn't really, it doesn't really provide any kind of historic context. So if you're trying to bring that structure, that house, back to what it was 100 years ago, then you're going to have to remove all the additions. So your comment is, is we don't know. So until we know, the decision is, is to cover it up until we have a decision. I mean, that's, that's, that's the conclusion I would have at this point.
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions for the engineer? And I see Councilwoman Hood, and then Councilwoman Bell.
Yes, thank you. When it's encapsulated, what is the possibility that moisture will be trapped within that, and then it will accelerate or continue to deteriorate? So is there a way that that can be ameliorated?
No, there's enough areas in that building that are exposed to the outside.
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
There's a number of areas in that building that, that if you see the plywood, as an example, covering the windows, it's not completely covered.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there is still flow, airflow through the building. We, one of the things that Marcus and I have not spoken about is maybe trying to provide some additional exposure, air to the outside. I mean, that's something we can talk about. But the exposure to the atmosphere now with the collapsed kitchen is not doing us any good.
No.
And so the encapsulation will, will provide the ability to keep out moisture. That's number one. But number two is allowing for air to infiltrate into the building. And I think, no, I know that there are areas of that, that will still remain.
Okay, could?
It's not airtight, in other words.
No, thank you. Could there be something that would, could be put on a schedule to go check on that periodically, to make sure that it's doing what it's supposed to be doing? And also, if there is a lot of moisture that's continuing to get in there and becoming a problem with mold and that sort of thing. I think that would probably make everybody feel better about that aspect of it.
So the contract calls that we incorporated into the contract was that the contractor would come out within a period of one year, and come out as often as necessary to fix the tarp, as an example, if it becomes loose. The inside of the building, as you're referring to, the inside should stay as it is, provided no more moisture gets into it. And so going in now to try to remove pieces of the ceiling and so forth, to try to eliminate some of that, that moisture that exists now, or some of the collapsed roof structure, I would say, don't touch anything. Leave it as it is.
I'm just saying, to make sure it doesn't get any worse.
You know, Marcus and I, we haven't really spoken about that. We can surely do once-a-month kind of entry into the building and take a look at it. That's a good idea.
Thank you.
I don't have a question for Mr. Kaiser. I have a general statement. So right before this, I've seen a demolition proposal for $30,000, and then I've seen encapsulation for $31,000. Mr. Kaiser, you mentioned to us the cost for getting this building up to code. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear, and so that everybody understands what I'm asking for. As it relates to the discussion of Forty Oaks, what I'm solely asking for is recommendations for the property and the cost of it. Because we've been given three, two different proposals, and then also have been given numbers as it relates to what it's going to do to get this up to code. And Mr. Kaiser, please remind me, if you remember, what you shared as it relates to getting this property up to code. What was that number?
I believe this was June or July of '24, I believe, summer '24. And, well, let me back up a little bit before that. In 2020, under City Manager Robin Gomez, actually before Robin Heath Parker, first City Manager, asked me to provide him with an estimate of the cost to rehabilitate that structure. I don't know. I don't know that number offhand. It was $350,000, $400,000, some number in 2018, 2019 timeframe. Mr. Gomez then asked for an update when he was city manager, the first couple of months he was in that position, and I gave him a number. It was $500 and some thousand. Then, right before he departed, he asked for an update, because there were cost increases in construction and so forth. And so I gave him that update. What I provided counsel in '24 was another revision to that, and I think that number was $600,000, if I'm not mistaken, round numbers. And so, that is, go in there and rehabilitate the entire house, or take off portions of the house? We didn't come, I didn't get to that detail. All I said was that number, that entire house. I didn't try to break it apart. And so, you know, there's a lot of detail that has to go into this, and a lot of close examination, and here is my history on things like this. City Hoanex, good example. We bought that from the Morris family for $130,000, $140,000, whatever that number was in 2014, 2013. Myself and a contractor that we had, and architect that we had, had an estimate, it was a design-build project, because of the unknowns. A design-build allows you to have some flexibility with design and construction occurring almost at the same time. So their estimate early on, my number was like $250,000. Then, when they got on board, the professionals that deal with us all the time, their number was like $300 and some thousand. But when it was all said and done, by the time that we opened up the ceilings and the lath plaster and all the problems we found, the painting and some of the structural conditions inside the house with the staircase, with the fire department, it ended up being $375,000 or $400,000. I don't know the exact number. So it basically tripled over a period of 2014 to when it was built, and whenever it was, 2015, 2016, whenever we moved in. And so, and that structure is actually in better condition than the Forty Oaks structure. So my number was based upon cost of construction and so forth. Michael Nyer, my chief building inspector, provided me with some numbers, which is what I used, and I added some numbers to it as well, and so that's how I came up with that number.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, we will now move to the public. If the public, did we have anyone signed up for this item? Okay, Robin, come on.
Why weren't we invited to speak if the question is about the house? I mean, we should have been here. We already went over all this information. We have a study from Georgia State, I believe, that talked about the history of the family, talked about the value of that family to Clarkston. One of the coolest thing is that this family moved into a house that they could afford, and they had to add on to it slowly. They were not wealthy, and they built it into something worth retaining. The core of that house was solid, according to Georgia State. Yes, the porch should go away, the kitchen should go away, but we talked about all sorts of potential options for what we could do with that house if we had it. We wanted to do all the tie-ins that Lisa already talked to. We wanted to be able to bring people in for tours, bring schools in for educational information, and number one, we don't want to restore it to code. We're not talking about doing that, and we already confirmed that previously. We just want to restore it as a reminder of the history. Make it someplace where people could use the lower story and host a wedding in the bottom story. It doesn't need to be upstairs, downstairs. We don't need to store file cabinets or whatever the other drama was. That house is amazing, and it was gifted to the city, and it's been neglected. We were told we needed to wait for this Parks and Rec Study. It's still not done. We were told that we couldn't apply for grants until we had certified local government. That's not done either. We need help to get those things done. We did find one grant that we could maybe apply for if we do it in concert with Forty Oaks, where we would get a $10,000 matching offer to try and protect property, which could help with this house. Everything else is going to require the certified local government status. So in short, to me, we've already been over all this. We presented information on it. We showed you what this could be, and it could be something that draws people to the city. But we need to be able to move forward on it if you want that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Hearing none, so it's closed off for public comments. So for this, again, the bigger thing was the bid that was presented by Mr. Seaton. With that, is this going to be on consent, or would this okay? It's not on consent, so we'll have this as a regular agenda item. Okay?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just a point, to make sure the people are clear. Is that okay?
Yes.
So nobody can go into a building if it's not up to code. There's a liability on the city. So when we ask the question in regards to how much it costs to get to code, I appreciate your recommendations, or anybody that's on that committee, right, of some of them, but you have to get the building up to code to even do some of the, like, museum and tours. And I just want to make sure that people are clear as to why we asked that number and why Mr. Kaiser gave us that number. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item with that. We'll go to new business, which is 7A, and that's to discuss the change of ownership and alcohol license application for Buddha Gurun for the Montreal Gas and Co. Company LLC DBA, Chevron Food Mark located at 1109 Montreal Road, Clarkston, Georgia, 30021, and Clerk Mitchell.
Yes, the owner of Montreal Gas and Company LLC has requested an alcohol license, excuse me, application due to a change of ownership for sale of beer, wine, and malt beverages at the gas station and convenience store formerly known as The Lung Bros. LLC. The Alcohol Review Committee received and reviewed the new alcohol license application and verified the business license has been issued. All site inspections and measurements have been performed. Background checks were conducted and passed, and the zoning compliance has been performed as well. The ARC is recommending, excuse me, that the application is approved.
Okay. Are there any questions for the council on this particular item? Okay. There any questions? None? Is there any questions from the public on this particular item? Any questions? Yes, councilman, I mean, Mr. Moore.
Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Madam Mayor, wasn't there a legislation passed, maybe Stephen can speak to that, that prohibited the transfer of the alcohol license to new owners in convenience stores in Clarkston? Can I get that answered, or do I need to write that in and find out three weeks from now what the legislation was?
I'll wait to you and your comments, and then we'll turn to our city attorney for that.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn.
Short answer is, that legislation did occur, but then it was essentially reversed by the city council, so that currently they can be transferred.
And let's kind of explain why it had to be adjusted, or however you want to phrase it.
Well, it, my impression was that the council determined that it resulted in an unfair and undue hardship on the license holders, basically taking away the ability to sell their business that they had invested in and built up equity in.
All right, thank you for that. Any other comments from the council at this time, or the public? Hearing none, this is closed for additional comments. So for this item, will it be on consent? Yeah? Consent? Consent. So no, it's not on consent, so I'm going to take it that the next, is that fair to say, we'll deal with each one? So no for consent on this one. And we'll move to the item 7B, which is to discuss the change of ownership and alcohol license application for Bishra Aria RL for 935 Investments LLC DBA Stop &amp; Save located at 935 North Indian Creek, Clarkston, Georgia 30021. Clerk Mitchell?
Yes, owner of 935 Investments LLC has submitted a change of ownership application for alcohol license to sell beer, wine, and malt beverages at a grocery store formerly known as Stop &amp; Save Group LLC. The ARC received and reviewed the new alcohol license application, verified the business license has been issued, and all onsite inspections and measurements have been performed. Background checks were conducted and passed, and the zoning compliance has also been performed. The ARC is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public?
I'd have one, a brief question. This is for Stephen. Did we, maybe my memory's not springing well, do we have a sunset clause on that? I want to say we set that through the end of this year, right, the transfer of ownership, or do we put that as indefinite?
Well, by recollection, and I don't want, hope I won't be held to this 100%.
How confident are you?
I'm going to go with about an 85% confidence, and my recollection is that while the sunset was discussed, the eventual decision was to not include that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you for that question. Any other comments or questions from the council? Any from the, yes, Councilwoman Hood?
I just asked that by the council meeting that you can clarify that, the 15%.
I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm like 99%. There's no sunset. I remember very clearly we didn't have that.
All right. Thank you from above, Councilman Carroll. Okay. Anything else? Anything else from the public? Hearing none, this item will go as a regular agenda item. Yes, council. Okay.
Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Madam Mayor, I heard mentioned that distances were measured. Is that in relation to the school, or to the church, or some other business that might be in conflict with them getting a license there and changing hands like this?
Okay, thank you. I'll turn that to Clerk Mitchell for clarification, and especially since I know that there was an adjustment in terms of the actual distance law that we, I'm not sure if that applied to alcohol too.
Distance were measured from school grounds, public parks, single-family residences, and other businesses.
Okay, all right. And the distance amount, what was the distance?
Excuse me. No school grounds within 100 yards of the business. There were no libraries or public parks within 100 yards of the business. No single-family residents within 50 yards of the business, and there were no schools within 100 yards of the business.
Okay, thank you for that. With that, we said this would go on the regular agenda, which brings us to the addition of That is different from what was on the program, and so, I mean, on the agenda, and that is for us to discuss the change of ownership and alcohol license applications for Rajleba for Pulse Gas LLC DBA, Brockett Shell and Food located at 1307 Brockett Road, Clarkston, Georgia 30021, and that would be Clerk Mitchell on that one as well.
Yes, owner of Pulse Gas LLC submitted an application for an alcohol license. This request was due to a change of ownership for the sale of beer, wine, and malt beverages at the gas station and convenience store formerly known as Jocelyn USA DBA Brockett Food Mark. The ARC received and reviewed the new application and verified the business license has been issued. All onsite inspections and measurements have been performed. Background checks were conducted and passed. Zoning compliance has also been performed, and the ARC recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Okay, with that, this will also go as a regular agenda item. So we'll now move to what was 7C. It's going to be 7D, and that is to discuss a resolution to appoint members to the Greenway Trails Steering Committee in support of Phase 1 of the Greenway Trails project, and that will be presented by City Manager Miller Thornton.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So members of the Greenway Trail Steering Committee will serve as a representative for the Clarkson community, providing strategic guidance in the engineering, design, and public outreach of Phase 1, concept plans, and to ensure the trail project aligns with our community's vision and objectives. Responsibilities of the committee are to provide advice on project strategy, goals, and timelines, review project progress and key deliverables, assist the staff, and design firm, and stakeholder engagement and communication, and help to identify and mitigate potential risks and challenges. Steering Committee is scheduled to meet twice over a period of 15 months, with each meeting duration of approximately two hours. There is an exhibit that will go along with this resolution that includes the names of the Steering Committee members. Of the 18 members that have been suggested, we have 11 confirmations. Four of the remaining confirmation are, would be representatives of the different apartment complexes. There are spur connections to those apartment complexes, and so we want to make sure, to try our best to include representatives from those housing complexes. Hopefully, we'll be able to get those remaining confirmed by Tuesday, the council vote. So if you all would give us an opportunity to confirm those, we'll provide the list at that time.
Okay, thank you for that. And council, do you have any questions? No questions? Public, do you have any questions at this time? Did we have anyone signed up for this item? Okay. Any questions, any comments? Any questions, any comments? Any questions, any comments? With that, this item is closed, and it will be a regular agenda item, subject to the city manager providing us the rest of the names for our approval. We'll move on to E, used to be D, to discuss the proposed 2026 City Council Regular Meeting and Work Session dates, and that would be Clerk Mitchell.
Yes, before you, you have a list of the regular city council work session and council meeting. We do have a couple of meetings that were pushed from a Tuesday to Thursday due to GMA, the election, and also National Night Out. We are recommending the June 30th date to be moved to June 23rd. That'll be a week prior to GMA, as well as moving November 24th to November 17th, due to the 24th being the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay. Any comments from the council?
Can you read those dates for me?
On your list, you will see June 30th. We're recommending that day be moved to June 23rd.
Okay. Any comments from the, oh, go ahead.
And then also, November 24th, we are recommending November 17th.
Okay, any comments from the council? Nope. Okay, from the public? Anyone signed up for that one? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and close this one off. Is this something where we can have it as consent? 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 Consent, okay. So just so you understand, if there is no further deliberation on an item, and Councilman Carroll, do you have, we have consent from you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So if we have no further deliberation, we have a list of items that we just vote at one time at the council meeting, so that's why I asked, and it's a pleasure of any council member to have this item on the agenda, which will allow for further discussion. So I just want to make sure we have new people in, so you know what exactly we're doing. With that, this is going to be a regular, this is a we're doing. With that, this is going to be a regular, uh, this is a consent agenda item, and we'll move now to F, 7F, it was your E, and that is to discuss an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, uh, Appendix A, Article 7, to add a definition for townhomes and amid, amend definitions for duplex, triplex, quadplex, and multifamily dwelling. And that is Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff has nothing further to add. But I hope it is when you.
Okay, outstanding. Um, with that, um, council, did you have any further comments or deliberation you would like to do on this particular item? Okay. None? We'll move to the public. Guess, guess what? You can make another comment, even though you had the public hearing. So if, soon as we get the mic, Clerk Mitchell, do we have anyone else assigned to this one wanting to speak?
Dean Moore.
Okay, Dean Moore, and then we'll.
Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Madam Mayor, this, uh, item's been discussed earlier this evening, and, uh, just want to encourage the council to, uh, just table these zoning issues. There's no reason to, uh, race into this. Uh, like I said, table it until, uh, you know, next year or the year after, maybe a couple of years down the road.
Thank you. Michelle.
Michelle, the surge of 37 Popular Drive. I just have one question, um, on the townhomes. Does that new definition apply to wherever it's mentioned in the comprehensive plan? Because if the comprehensive plan says that you can have, in like N1, single-family and townhomes are suggested, is that the new definition or the old definition? Thank you.
Thank you. Make a mental note, and if we have any other comments. Do we have anyone else? Anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none. If it's fine with the city manager to have Mr. Edwards come? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On this, we would highly advise, uh, at least approving the definition of a townhome, as our code currently does not define a townhome, and it could be 20 attached units if they wanted. This is setting parameters for what a townhome can be, so we do encourage you to at least take that into consideration. Um, our comprehensive plan does not have definitions related to different zoning items, um, but there are different uses allowed within different, um, future land use areas. Uh, and without a specific example, I'm not sure if I can give you an exact answer on that, but, um, happy to reach out to Ms. Michelle and answer any questions she may have.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, um, this item, are we going to have this as a consent item? Okay, all right. Hearing that, that will be a regular agenda item as well. So we will move to, it is G, it was, was F, and that is to discuss an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance, uh, Appendix A, Article 4, to add, amend the use table to expand the allowance of duplex, townhomes, and home occupations. Mr. Edwards.
All right, madam. I'll answer some of the public comments on this. The only byright change that we are providing in this is to allow duplexes in the RC, which is the residential commercial district. We find that to be appropriate. Um, everything within the NR2 and Town Center zoning district would be through a conditional use permit by City Council, which would require public notice mailings, public notice signs, and three public hearings between Planning and Zoning Commission. And you all, so we think that would be appropriate to review back. Uh, and that's all I have to add.
Okay, thank you. And council, did you, would, would any council member like to make a comment on this item? Councilman Perkins?
Switch, Mr. Paul. Um, Mr., just to understand, I think we were looking through some of the lots in NR2, and even as is, I mean, there's only one or two developable lots for townhomes, even though we have multiple steps that anybody would have to go through to be able to do anything correct. Because I believe the minimum lot width is 60 feet, and the average outlet lot width, I believe, is 50.
Yeah. Uh, most of our NR2 zoning lots currently are non-conforming, as they do not meet today's code.
Okay. No further questions.
All right, any comments from the council? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. We'll take, did we have anyone signed up? Did we have Dean Moore sign?
Dean Moore.
Okay, Dean Moore. Grace us with your presence. Thank you very much.
Uh, Dean Moore, Rayford Trail. Madam Mayor, instead of trying to stretch the, uh, current definitions and boundaries, uh, I'd like to see the city do a little more, um, work towards developing an actual townhome, uh, ordinance. And, um, once we have that, then maybe we could look at dropping those into certain districts, if that's what the city and the public want. But at, at this point, I think that you're, again, putting the cart before the horse. If you're going to allow townhouses to be built in certain areas as, uh, as described in our ordinance at this point, or in, in some of these recommendations for, uh, making the lot sizes smaller, I think you're gonna run into some serious problems with that. And, uh, so I'd like you to go ahead and table this until we, uh, have an actual townhouse ordinance that, uh, has a better, uh, better guidelines and better structure than what we have today.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for this item? Anybody else? Yes.
I realize we have exceptional lots.
Say who you are. Just always make sure.
Robin Sands.
Okay.
3730 Carroll Park Drive. We have exceptions throughout Clarkston. We have lots that need development. We have many of them that need development. Fully support that. We should not be planning Clarkston around the exceptions. That's what variances are for. By all means, if there's variance, it's needed to make a smaller lot something that can be viable for something that's good for Clarkston, do that. But if there is, they're planning the whole city, so we can now do those variances everywhere, does not make sense. It will be abused. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Yes.
I'm not sure if this is gonna, Jean Hilliard, Cranford Drive. I'm not sure if this is gonna come up again later, but in regard to the townhomes and the proposed parking changes and things, I heard you say during that that you got this from this recommendation, and I think that we can just use common sense. And common sense says we need to have enough parking for the building. And if that goes along with these townhomes or any other building, can we please use common sense? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, if there are no further comments from the public, um, this item is a regular agenda item. Okay, we'll keep this as a regular agenda item, which means we'll move to the next one, which is to, which would be H, your G, and that's to discuss an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston's zoning ordinance, uh, Appendix A, Articles 3, Section 305, to amend residential zoning districts, dimensions, requirements in NR1, NR2, and NR3 zoning districts. Before we do that, I know we had several alcohol licenses, um, on our applications. If you're one of those individuals, your item will be on the agenda next week, so you are free to leave the meeting. So I just want to make sure if you're staying for the meeting, by all means, please stay. But I don't, I want to make sure if you need to leave, you know you have the option to leave, and it will be on the agenda next, um, week. So with that, Mr. Edwards.
Uh, yeah, so on this one, I'm kinda going back to the question Councilman Perkins asked. So all, most of the NR2 lots are considered non-conforming now because they don't meet the existing code. So this would help bring some of those lots into compliance, uh, not with every regulation, but with more regulations. For example, I had someone reach out last week who lives in NR2, who wants to put a small addition on their house. They can't do it because they're already over the FAR limit. Uh, so they said that some, a text amendment like this would help them with that development. But that's just one scenario. Um, further, um, this proposal, the original proposal was for townhome lots to be 1,400 square feet with community meetings and stuff. We've had made some negotiations, uh, and staff is now recommending 1,950 square feet based on those discussions, which would put you at approximately 12 to 13 units an acre. Based on the current code, you can do nine single-family homes per unit, per acre. Uh, so it's not really that much of an increase in density based on site design. Uh, it would have same impacts as nine single-family homes based on impervious surface and FAR being the same. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to you for any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions on this item? Okay. I do have a question.
I do have some. Go ahead, if you may, but chance question first.
Okay, thank you. Um, for some of the neighborhoods, if they have a covenant or something, because I know that some of them were built in the 1980s, how, if any, would that impact what we are talking about in terms of, you know, adding even the ADUs? I think some of them are not allowed necessarily to do that. Um, so have we ensured that anything as it relates to particularly three subdivisions that we have, um, are we gonna be any way impacted by that with any covenants? And I think Mr. Quinn has, will take that for you.
Thanks. I thought I should volunteer, since that sounded like a legal question. Um, first thing to remember about covenants is that the city does not enforce them. We don't make them. We can't change them. We don't enforce them. They are private contractual rights between the owners of property within a subdivision. They can be removed by the owners, either by their majority decision, or, um, this sounds like this property is residential. Georgia passed a law a decade or so ago that basically said they have to be affirmatively renewed every 20 years or something like that. So you'd have to look on a case-by-case basis, but those will expire unless they're affirmatively renewed.
Okay, thank you for that.
And I had, we're just, sorry, while I had, uh, the, my mic on, uh, Ms. Mitchell found the ordinance about alcohol and emailed it to me, and I was able to confirm that there is no sunset in the current code with regards to transferring the licenses.
Okay, thank you. So your regulation, the recollection is okay?
It was. Mr. Carroll was better, though. He was 99%.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. Okay, and so Councilman Carroll?
Yeah, so I think originally this plan, when we proposed it last year, was 1,400 square feet for all the lots in NR3. And so after that, the community said they wanted some more feedback. We went back through a year of ARC meetings. We had a lot of public meetings. We had a lot of discussion. And so as a compromise, it's moved up to 4,000 for everything except for townhomes. And townhomes are at 1,950. And the reason for that is logically, if you leave townhomes at 5,000 or even 4,000, just no townhomes would be built. You know, there's no townhomes at 4,000 square feet. That property doesn't exist. So if you leave it there, you're basically saying no to townhomes ever in NR3 unless there's a variance. Um, so understand, not everyone is happy with the 1,950 compromise. I'm sure there's no compromise in the world that would make every single person happy. So if that's the standard, you're just not gonna pass the legislation. But after a lot of public meetings, I think there are at least some NR3 homeowners, uh, quite a few in the room that were happy with it. Take the 1,950 square feet for townhomes as a compromise, combined with just 4,000 for everything else. So I think that that's a reasonable compromise. It does allow for some infill development, some townhomes, it may be starter homes, it may be more affordable than a larger single-family home for new families, and does increase the tax base somewhat, um, while at the same time, not overly disturbing the neighborhood because, uh, Mr. Edwards said we're really only going to maybe 12 or 13 from nine. So this is a pretty minor increase in density. Um, and that's even assuming that, you know, everything is built out at once, which obviously it won't be, you know, it'll come in fits and starts. So I think that, that 1,950 is a reasonable compromise, uh, that can hopefully allow for some density and some increase in tax base, but at the same time preserve the neighborhoods. That's all I have.
Yeah, and to further that, um, townhomes are a byright use. They are allowed byright in the NR2 and NR3 zoning district currently. So this is just creating better design standards for townhomes, uh, not necessarily allowing them where they weren't allowed before.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the council?
I did have a, if I may. Um, I did have a question. So when you talk about, um, existing lots being non-conforming, what are the implications of that?
Um, if they were to be damaged over 50% of their assessed value, um, they would have to come up to today's current codes, uh, which means some structures in the city would not be allowed to be rebuilt as they are now. Um, this is an issue I believe almost every city I've ever worked in deals with, because codes change every five to 10 years. But there are several here that do fall on that with large subdivisions being almost included completely in, um, non-conforming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, um, I'm aware of this. You and I spoke about that. Uh, I would like to find out if there is, separate from any of the zoning, proposed zoning changes or anything, strictly speaking of the fact that we have, uh, places that are non-conforming, is there a way that we can do an overlay or do some other, uh, legislative action that would prevent them from being subject to their house burning down and not being able to be rebuilt? Because that's, that's a possibility. And I know that the intent for non-conforming uses is that over time, that they come into conformance with the new zoning. But because we, this development, you know, just doesn't match the NR2 as written, um, so I'd just throw that out there to city attorney. What's your, your thoughts about how we can give them relief?
Yes. Um, well, first of all, it's, even if it's not written in our code, there is an implication under state law that a single-family residential has to be able to use, be used for a single-family residence. In other words, if we say that the minimum lot width is 60 feet, the lot's 50 feet wide, the house burns down. Then, uh, according to the rules in the code, like Mr. Edwards described, they wouldn't be able to build anything back. But that's not how the law works, because that would be taking their property. So there exists this implication that they can rebuild. Um, what I have seen in zoning codes, and I think would recommend as a way for this to be written rather than implied, um, and just set expectations for everyone, that's the one that concerns me the most, is where the lot, the dimensions of a lot are smaller than what's required. So given that, um, situation specifically, I would recommend something in the zoning code to address that by saying that, you know, we would work on the details. But in essence, you can rebuild on that lot as long as you have adequate setbacks, for example.
Yeah, and I think my main concern, I think a non-conforming lot can be built on. That's done all the time. Uh, but non-conforming being your FAR, your lot coverage, and your setbacks. Those are the things that, in my opinion, if your house was destroyed over 50%, the non-conforming structure would have to meet all three of those regulations.
And that's as our current zoning code stands.
Yes. So for example, the FAR in most of our NR2 neighborhoods is .4 now, and most of them are between .5 and .6.
Okay. Um, Stephen, would that, would, could we get language in our code that would give them the ability to build their house back just the way it was, even if the FAR and so on were different?
Yeah, we certainly could. Um, you know, I think a little work would go into that, but yes, of course.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions from the council? Yes.
I did have a question on that. So with that process that we're describing, is that, would that go through like a variance request, or how much additional time would be, be at, putting on people to be able to rebuild?
Well, it depends on how we do it. I mean, the variance would be the default. That's what That's what we have now in essence, right? That you would say, you, the property owner, would apply for the variance, saying that my lot is smaller than what you've made the standard to be, so I need a variance enabled to be able to use it. It's actually a really good case for a variance, and that's one of the reasons variance is in the code. The thing about the variance is it's a slow process relatively, and it makes it case by case. So if we've identified a situation that recurs, we could address that in advance, similar to what Councilmember Hood was suggesting, by putting it in the code so that they could do it as of right. And so what I've seen in other jurisdictions is they will have a definition for a non-conforming lot of record. And that basically means that the lot dimensions were conforming at the time that it was created or it couldn't have been created. It's not, because there is a situation where a property owner might want to split their lot to create two smaller ones, right? So that wouldn't qualify. And then within the non-conforming lot of record, one thing to address is like building back if there's a casualty. But another would be simply reducing the requirements that Mr. Edwards mentioned, proposal to the size of the lot compared to the minimum lot size that was counted on when we came up with those, if that made sense? And we could just put that right in the code, so then when the planning and development departments sees, oh, this lot is 10% smaller, so all these things are reduced by 10% when I'm reviewing their application, just automatically.
Okay. Does she have a follow-up?
So your suggestion is to go case by case versus would it not be more efficient to go through and look if we have a bunch of non-conforming lots already, and we have things that are out of alignment with a comprehensive plan, to adjust those? Because my understanding is our code needs to reflect our confidence. So sort of two questions. One is, would this not fix things more expediently? And then the second is, what this is doing for some of the lots, it's allowing what is recommended in our comp plan through public feedback to be built?
Right. Well, I guess, I think I didn't communicate clearly. I think that we have in place now a fallback option for case by case, which is the variance process. The case by case aspect of that is less desirable, in my opinion, to doing a non-conforming lot of record amendment to the code, which I think is what you were also in favor of. And so that would already be there, you know? And rather than, you know, the alternative would be to come up with more zones and different dimension requirements. But if the issue we've identified is in NR2, the minimum width is 60 and the minimum size is whatever, but what we're finding is that there's lots of 50 and sizes of whatever, you know, 80% of whatever, then we could address that mathematically, and it would all be done in advance for everybody that has one of those lots.
All right, thank you for that. Any comments from the public at this time? Dean Moore? Okay. And Dean, make sure, don't leave my councilmembers out, please, don't, when you address stuff here too.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I appreciate you expanding my horizon. And Stephen, thank you for mentioning with a little bit of work, these things can be fixed. And I'd like to point out that there's no urgency in this at all. Counsel, Ms. Bell, Sarifa, Ms. Johnson. The townhouses we had built at Glendale and Church Street were built without this ridiculous attempt to split the lots up and appeal to developers. Those are some really nice townhouses. That was done by a professional developer. The guy that owned the property originally was a professional investor, and if we can just get the good people and the good developers, that would be great. But what this does is attract small developers with empty pockets, and that's a disaster for the city. So I really think that you, sorry, Mark, I forgot to mention you before, but I'd really like you to consider that these changes right here that are being proposed are specifically proposed for a developer or several developers to come into the city and destroy the city as we know it. So I encourage you to table this, let's go with the comprehensive plan. I think you started to say that the ordinances should reflect the comprehensive plan. Well, next year is a comprehensive plan. Let's put this off for a couple of years, two or three years, and I think that we'll be in better shape. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Is it the consent of council for Mr. Quinn to draft? No. What, what Councilmember Hood and Councilmember Perkins just suggested?
Is that something that you want now, or?
I'm just asking.
From speaking just personally, I think that can go to next year, but we could have a fire at any time and be facing that situation. I guess they would go through a variance. But I do think if we've got an obvious problem with our current code, that we probably need to, somebody needs to deal with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm timeline, that's all.
Yeah, it needs to be an agenda item.
I understand that.
No, 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 I got you, I got you. Don't worry, we got it. So we'll make sure in terms of maybe the next meeting or next, next year. I think that's what I heard.
Right.
Next year.
I think sooner rather than later, but not immediately.
Okay. Okay. And I think we had two people from the public. Tim? Is that it? Okay. Was that it for public comments, too? Okay, all right, so, sorry, public, I'm trying to stay not till 11 o'clock, okay? All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is, I, as your H, and ask to discuss an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 3, and that's section 314, to update development standards for townhomes in the NRCD, RC, and TC zoning districts. Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I have nothing further to add on this text amendment. If you have any questions, you may have.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any comments? Okay. Public, any comments for this one? Did we have anyone signed up for it? No, okay. All right, no one signed up, so Mr. Hall, did you want to come and speak on this item? Okay, please do.
Specifically, I just wanted to set the record straight, that it was earlier mentioned, and I think it relates to this item. I view these items, five items, as kind of a very similar proposal, but I just wanted to say that at the open house and community meeting on Monday, there was no consensus or compromise reached. Just because Jamie Carroll suggested 1,950 feet does not mean that was a compromise. And that's simply all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wanted to speak? You want to come up?
My name's Cora Hall, I live on Market Street. I'm going to be rude and address the last item. I just wanted to note that I was at the open house meeting, and I want you guys to know that the non-conforming lots and people not being able to rebuild their homes was pushed as a main reason why we should adjust the lot size allowances. If there's another way to address that, I strongly believe that we should leave the lot sizes alone and put in an ordinance that would allow people to rebuild quicker. This was presented as a main push against a room full of residents who did not agree. Just want you guys to know.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to comment on this item? Okay. Hearing none for this item, this will be a regular agenda item, okay? We'll move to J, which is your I, and that is to discuss an ordinance to amend the City of Clarkston's zoning ordinance appendix A, Article 6, to amend the off-street parking requirements. Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. On this one, on average, it's increasing all of the parking standards that we currently have, except for the quadplex, triplex, and duplex. We're reducing that from two to one with the required guest parking. And then the rest of it will actually be an increase for most of the developments you would see in multifamily. There's just standards as opposed to one per unit. For example, now if you built 100 three-bedroom townhome units, you have 300 spots, now you would have to put in 600. So it is addressing some of those concerns based on the number of bedrooms. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you for questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Edwards, counsel, do you have any comments or questions at this time? Okay. Hearing none, public, do you have any comments or questions at this time on this item? And did we have anyone signed up, Clerk Mitchell, for this? No, okay, all right. Hearing no comments or the need to present comments, we will close this item, and I'm taking that this item is a regular agenda item as well. Okay, with that, we're moving to K, which you may see as your J, and that's to discuss a resolution awarding a professional service agreement to the most responsive and responsible bidder, FS Scarborough LLC, to provide resurfacing, striping, street patching, and related tasks as specified in the GDOT Local Road Assistance LRA 2025, street resurfacing invitation to bid in the amount of $284,704.20 to be funded out of SPOS II. And that is Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So we received local road assistance funding from the Georgia Department of Transportation last year for $137,876. We prepared a bid package, that bid package of roads is a continuation that we've talked about the last two years. You may recall a little big old spreadsheet with all the list of roads and the road conditions, and all we're doing is picking off one at a time and just adding to that list. And so I've included that as an exhibit. Exhibit D is a list that you've seen before. It's roads that have been resurfaced since 2011. And so I've also included Exhibit C, which is a seven-year history. I know Councilwoman Hood here last year asked a question, I remember, about what monies have been expended over the years from GDOT funding, so I've just updated that as well. And so the streets that you see here are ones that came off that list that we've been talking about. There are other roads on that list that are as bad as those roads that I've listed here as part of the bid package. The reason they were not included is for a variety of reasons. I've, I've put those notations in the spreadsheet of Exhibit D as to why they are not included here, and we'll talk about that here shortly. So the roads that we've included are six streets, again, off that same list that we've been working off the last two years. DeBel Street from Market to North Indian Creek, mill and resurface. Ridgeland Trail from McLaren to Dead End, milling and resurface. Vaughn Street from Hill Street to Montreal Road, mill and resurface. Mel Place from Mel Avenue to Dead End, mill and resurface. Casa Court from Casa Drive to Dead End, mill and resurface. East Ponce de León from 4062 East Ponce to 4050 East Ponce. So that's coming up the hill. If you're at the bottom of the hill where North Indian Creek is, you could go up the hill going west. That's where all, that's a steep grade there. You got a lot of wear and tear on the pavement from trucks and buses and so forth. That section needs to be milled out and replaced. Basically, it's a big patching job, is what that is. And so I've included that in this project as well. And then two roads for restriping. North Indian Creek from East Ponce to East Ponce de León to Montreal Road, restriping. And Montreal Road from North Indian Creek to Tucker City Limits, restriping. I put in the best striping for that, for those sections. I may come back to the city manager and go with regular paint instead of the thermoplastic paint because of what I'm going to say next. In this agenda package, we talked about rollover of LMEG funds. We have two roads that have really deteriorated rapidly the last 18 months or so. And those roads are North Indian Creek is, are one of those roads, and also Montreal Road, the same road that we're going to restripe. Rolling over LMEG, I know I'm skipping around, but it pertains to one of the agenda items here later on. The rollover is allow us to have two years of funding from GDOT to put towards resurfacing and milling those two long roads. Those two long lengthwise roads, the cost to do that is, we're about, right about $550 to $600,000. So we're going to have maybe half of those funds from rollover, and the other half will have to come from SPOS in a year and a half. In the meantime, we may find, Marcus and I may find, that we may have to go and do some patching on those two roads so that we don't have significant potholes happening. If we get any significant amount of days of freeze thaw conditions, those areas you see out there now that are in pretty bad condition, alligator cracking and some ravelling and, and some minor potholes are beginning to appear, that road will fall apart. And so we may have to go in next year and try to do some resurfacing and patching. But back to the striping. I may not want to spend four times the money on really good striping and just use regular paint that will last for a year and a half to two years because the cost is a lot less. So right now, the bid package includes thermoplastic, but we may, I may recommend the city manager go back to regular paint instead. Because if we resurface that road in two years, then all that money that we spent on the striping will go to waste. But the regular paint will be fine. It will be just fine for the next two years, and it's a third or the fourth of the cost. So anyway, I digress. So the low bidder was $284,704.22. The bidders, bid prices went from 284.704 all the way up to 669,000. My estimate was 350,000 before the bids were opened. I prepared my, my estimate a couple of months ago. And so their price came in less than mine, which is not usually the case. I know of the firm, we've never worked with that firm before, but I did do their reference checks, and they have done work for cities over the last year or two using state funding, which is important, they understand the process. So you may ask, we got $137,000 from GDOT, where's the rest of the money come from? Right? And so that money would come from SPOS II, and I'm suggesting, recommending that we reallocate a dollar amount from the SPOS II project program that was specifically in there for $150,000 for the underpass under the CSX Railroad, the pedestrian underpass. You may recall, we put together the SPOS referendum when that was still through the bipartisan infrastructure law. We submitted a grant for a pedestrian underpass. We did not get it, but we didn't know that until after the fact. And so we're not going to spend that money. And so I would ask the council to agree to allow us to transfer that $150,000 to this project as a, as the, as the difference between the bid as well as the, the funding that we needed. So that's, that's the recommendation I would have. And the rest of it is just process, contract signatures and bonding and, and all that kind of good stuff.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any comments? And for the? And for the allocation that you were saying to transfer, does it fall in line with the allocation requirements in terms of, you know, so many, so much we had allocated for infrastructure and everything else? Does the money that you're referring to fall within that category?
Yes, it does. Yep. It's all part of the transportation program.
Okay. I just want to make sure we addressed that. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Councilor Perkins.
This is more on how this ends up getting administered. What recourse do we have if paving is not done adequately? I'll give you some examples of the recent, some of the recent resurfacings that we've had. There've been areas where corners were cut with one of our previous contractors, and so, and I can go into detail offline, I can follow up with some of that, but what, do we have a callback procedure for that, or how does that get taken care of?
No, I didn't need to know the difference. So we, during our punch list on the previous work that was done this summer, there's a few areas that we had to have them come back through, do punch list work on. If we miss something, and it was part of the contract, then I am sure I can convince the previous contractor to come in and fix it. I didn't need to know where that is. I'm not aware of where that is.
Okay.
So we can talk offline if you want to.
Okay, sure. I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Hood?
Yes. You kind of lost me in there somewhere with the funds going here and going there and changes to this. Can you put that in a memo for us so that that would help me understand where the money's coming from and where it's going to and that sort of thing? I think what's attached here talks mostly about, well, it does have some information about the reallocate money. Maybe I should just call you in. Is anybody else confused besides me? If it's just me, I'll call you, and you can go over to them.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. And did we have anyone signed up for this one?
Dean Moore.
All right.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I think a few years ago, you voted to redo College Avenue, and I'd like to see that get back on the list. I know there's at least one homeowner that has a problem with the curb, and part of that project was to raise the curb in some of those areas where it's running into their house and into their property. So thank you, just wanted to include that.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Michelle?
Michelle, 3756 Poplar. Piggyback off of Councilwoman Hood, I do have a question with that transfer of funds because I'm looking at the SPOS II transportation program expenses. Is that in the 26 budget that you're talking about, that transfer of funds? So where's that from?
The regional referendum in 2023.
So it's not in this budget? So we're going to be adding it in?
Part of the point being SPOS.
So when we, when all of us did, all of us mean the county, the county and the municipalities, we had to do the referendum for SPOS II. When we did the referendum, we identified categories or buckets where we would receive the money, like we get the penny tax, and it would go into the different categories, right? And so as we're getting those funds, based on those allocations of those categories, that's where the money would go. We had certain projects that we kind of identified on that list when we had the referendum. So that is what Mr. Kaiser is referring to in terms of, there was $150,000 where we thought we were going to be able to get a project, we weren't able to get that project. And so he's identified that as funds that we could potentially transfer for this particular project.
So we do have the money?
I'm on.
Bond.
Yep.
That's what I was, I was going to say.
Yeah.
We have it, so we just haven't used it.
Right. And so just so you also know, because normally with the SPOS funding, it is an annual allocation that we get. However, what we did was do a bond so that we could upfront some of those funds, so that we can do these projects that we're talking about now versus waiting over the six years, is it six years, to be able to collect the funds.
Mayor.
Yes.
That is absolutely correct, but annually during that six-year period, those expenditures have to be included in the current project budget, and so it is actually included in that budget that you see. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What line is it?
It is under, there's Capital Construction Line. I can't remember the name of the line.
Two. Oh, yeah. Got it.
You see, that's a full amount. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none. So for this item, we're going to have this as an agenda item or a comment.
Consent is on this phone with me.
Okay. Consent? Okay. Consent? Anybody want consent?
CNN's time.
I thought she was going to leave the morning. She wants a phone call.
She just wants a phone call, so hey.
I just, I just want to understand it a little.
Right.
Better, but not to the extent that we can't just move forward with it.
And if you, you're uncomfortable, we put on consent, we can take it off on the agenda next Tuesday. So you're fine, Councilwoman A.D., for consent? Okay. So this one is consent. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, ma'am.
Keep standing there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So we'll move to the next one, which is L, and that is to discuss a resolution awarding a professional service agreement to the most responsive and responsible bidder, Hasbon Construction, LLC, for the construction of gazebos and related streetscapes amenities installation on Market Street in the amount of $82,073.28 to be funded out of SPOS I. Mr. Kaiser?
Yes, ma'am. So back in the days of the streetscapes project, we initially had the layout of several more gazebos than what you see out there now, and they were removed for budgeting purposes. And so what we did was went back in under the SPOS I program and put together a bid package to incorporate four additional gazebos that are 16-foot by 16-foot, wood-framed, basically what you see out there now, a little bit smaller because the footprint is a little bit smaller to work within, including some additional benches and trash receptacles. Two gazebos on the east side, two on the west side will not hinder pedestrian flow. It will go basically where the brick pavers are now. We have spoken, I have spoken personally to the manager, the owner of the strip center on the east side several times, showed her on site, laid it out for her. She's 100% behind it. She's thrilled that we're not blocking her sign, which we wouldn't do anyway, but we wanted to make sure we had her participation. And so we put out the bid, had several bidders. The bidders went from $148,000 to $82,000. You know, whenever I see that range, just like on the resurfacing project before, I always question what that low bid is because my number was higher than that. Then I found out that has been construction, after I called a few references, I remember that name from City of Tucker. They built the Town Green Project for City of Tucker, as well as several other projects the last year. So they are a quality contractor, very, very good. City of Tucker is very pleased with them. And so the reason they gave us that price is because they're still working across the interstate, and it was easy for them to bid on this and provide us with a good price, so it's good for us. So that's the project, and they can begin, they said, the first week of January, and that's where we are.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay. Hearing none. Did we have anyone signed up for this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none. Is this item a consent? 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 Okay. Consent. Thank you all. We'll move to M, which is, looks like your L, and that is to discuss a resolution awarding a professional service agreement to the most responsive and responsible bidder, Freeze and Nichols, to provide conceptual design services for the Norman Road Dam Rehabilitation Replacement Project in the amount of $402,958 to be awarded out of SPOS II. Mr. Kaiser?
The project's been around for a while, and finally, thanks to council, we were able to actually get something done on that dam in nick of time. So put together an RFP for Professional Engineering Services. This is a little bit different approach, I don't think anybody on council, except for you, Mayor, where we went through a qualification-based selection process. The last time we did this, one of the streetscapes project, the design work, where you select a engineering firm based upon their qualifications, their skill set, and their technical ability, and price is a secondary issue. I know it's an odd approach for most elected officials. We do with that a lot of federally funded projects, state-funded projects, but because we don't know where the funding's coming from in the future on this project, I want to be 100% sure that we followed the guidelines of the federal process, just in the event we end up with some other funding for this. So this is a qualification-based election. Firm submitted their technical proposals, we had a review committee. Review committee looked through all the, all the technical proposals with no fee included, and Freeze and Nichol came out to be number one, unanimous, if I remember correctly. And so we then informed Freeze and Nichol of that. We, of course, they, we asked them to submit a scope of work as well as a fee. They submitted that, negotiated the fees, the man-hours, and the scope, added some things, subtracted a few things. They offered us a few suggestions. These kind of firms do this for a living. They do this all the time. Freeze and Nichol is almost like one of the larger dam engineering firms that does design work in the southeast United States, and so they're very skilled at this. And so we spent a week or two negotiating. The number was a little bit excessive, $500,000. The final number was 402. We're getting everything we want to for conception, conceptual design work only, which means that, as I put it out in the RFP, once the concept work is done, survey work, three options presented to council, there's a whole slew of things we're going to do with this over the next 12 to 14 months. Once we pin down the concept work, what we think we want in terms of an option for that dam, then we can even negotiate with that same firm for the final construction plan development, or if we find that we don't like Freeze and Nichol, we can put it back out to bid through a QBS process and bring another firm on board with a concept that we've selected, the council have selected. And so that's where we are with this. I'm not going to go through the history of the dam. We all, we all know what the history is, and project details are all laid out. I won't go through all of it. It does include a lot of outreach to the various environmental agencies, includes survey work, includes options in terms of how we deal with that dam, includes pros and cons, cost estimates. So we're actually doing a lot more purposely upfront so that we're not dealing with it in the final plans. We know what we want. We say, prepare design plans, construction plans, and be done with it. So this is a 12- to 14-month process for conceptual work, and when we get to the final plan work, it's most probably more like six or seven months of finishing up the plan. A lot of meetings, we have two public meetings included in this, stakeholder outreach, we're using Sycamore, Sycamore is part of the team. We're happy to see that. They do a great job for us on a number of projects over the years. And again, this is a SPOS II funded project, and there's really not much more to say than what we have here.
Okay. Thank you. And for this one, how much are we working or leveraging DeKalb County especially?
None on the design work. We're going to wait till the construction cost.
Okay.
So estimate for construction is right around $2 million. We have 1.5 total in SPOS II. 1.5 total meaning design and construction. So you take away $400,000, you take away about another $150,000, $200,000 for final plans, so that leaves us right around $900,000 for construction cost. It's going to cost $2 million, right around $2 million. So we'll worry about that two years from now, but we have to, we can still have an outreach, right, to DeKalb County. So DeKalb County is going to be involved with this.
Okay.
I can promise you that. They'll be, just like they are with SS4A grant, because you think about that dam, you think about that water, where does some of it come from? DeKalb County. And so, you know, we'll, we'll deal with them as the project begins.
Okay. And then part of that is also ensuring that we work with them for contingency because, again, my big concern is that road, anything happens, the school and everything else over at Jolly, so.
Free options. So if you want me to, I can describe what I think the options are.
Because this is just design. This is just design. I want to stay focused, but I just, I want to make sure we have that laid out. Counsel, do we have any questions at this time? Okay. Hearing none. Did we have anyone signed up? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Good to see you all. As I read, Sean Waters, 996 Nielsen Drive, Clarkston, Georgia. During any conceptual design process on behalf of Freeze and Nichol's, I just want to reiterate the importance of keeping the residents around Clarkston Lake, including Cleve Mark and Nielsen, that we are consulted, collaborated, and treated as stakeholders in any of the design process, that we just want to be informed on any of the plans that may impact the lake or our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wanted to speak on this item? Okay. Hearing none. We'll close this off, and is this something for, that you want as a regular agenda item? Consent? 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 Okay. Consent? All right. Consent if, Counsel. Yes, consent, Counsel, Councilman Carroll? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, consent.
Consent? Okay. Thank you. We have this as consent. And then we, next we have.
Mayor.
Yes.
I think we have a public comment from Kathy Burroughs.
Yes, Kathy. Did you have a comment?
Yes. Hi. Yes. I want to just add to what Sean says. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the council. We're very hopeful about the possibilities of some progressive design associated with the Norman Road Dam that could possibly impact the Norman Road frontage. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm getting a lot of reverb on my end. But Greg Reddaw, who's one of the engineers for the company that's been chosen for the conceptual design work, has worked extensively with Clarkston Lake and Crystal Pond in a previous capacity. And we'd really love to be involved in some of the design notions that may impact the Norman Road frontage. There's a lot of exceptionally progressive and creative approaches to lake fronts out there, and this offers a really rare and wonderful opportunity for us to explore those possibilities. So I'd love to put that into the conceptual design and planning process.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Okay. With that, any other comments? Hearing none. This, we already have it as consent. We'll move on to N, which is, which has M, to discuss a resolution awarding a professional service agreement to the most responsive and responsible bidder, Pond and Company, for the rewrite and of the city's comprehensive plan in the amount of $151,458 to be funded out of the professional service line in the planning and economic development budget. Mr. Edwards?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So on this one, Pond is be teaming up with Sycamore.
So on this one, Pond is be teaming up with Sycamore Consulting, that Sycamore would be doing the community engagement. This is for a full rewrite of the comprehensive plan and two small area plans for Tahoe Village and Rocket Point, which were two places identified in our housing roundtables with ARC that people wanted to see redeveloped, so we're going to go ahead and get some conceptual designs for that. And on this one, Pond was the highest scoring. And on this one, just so you all know, I did recuse myself from voting on this one as CPL was a bidder. And then, we had the Community Development Director from the City of Tucker come review these in my place with the city manager and two other city staff. And with that, I will turn it over to you all, if you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Council, did you have any questions, or did we have?
We're still working on some things with the contract with Pond, but we hope to have that updated in your packet for the next meeting, so I don't think this one could go on consent.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, the information that you'll be providing for us by next week's meeting, will that include the, sort of, the scope of work?
Yes, ma'am.
And indication of those two small area plans?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council at this time? Do we have anyone sign up from the public on this one? No? Any comments from the public on this item? Okay. This is a regular agenda item, as we are waiting further information from the department to provide that for us, so.
And the, I think someone from Pond is here, if you'd like to speak with them as well.
Okay, all right. Come on up, show your face.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Madam Manager, just Randy Gibbs, I'll be the project manager for the comp plan update. So very excited to be working with the city of Clarkston, you sir, and looking forward to progressing, to ensure that the city can, maintains its quality of local government status, and continues progressing. So, excited to address a lot of the zoning issues. We do, we don't necessarily do zoning, we do character areas and, and, and things of that nature, but at the same time, certainly looking to incorporate all of the things that we've heard this evening, so. Just Randy Gibbs from Pond, happy to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Any other comments? All right, with this one, this is a regular agenda item, so we'll move to O, which is your N, and that is to discuss a resolution awarding a professional service agreement to the most responsive and responsible bidder, KB Advisory Group, to complete an annexation feasibility study in the amount of $87,000 to be funded out of professional service line item in the Planning and Economic Development Budget. Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. On this one, they were the most responsive bidder, and they also were able to complete the work in about half the time as the other bidder, so a lot of things came into play, and they were ranked as the highest bidder for this by the entire team. And with that, we would recommend you approve this contract, and someone from KB Advisory Group is here, if you'd like to speak with them as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the council? Okay. Hearing none, Mr.
I have, I think, is that in your budget or mine?
Oh, I just want to make a point of clarity, Mayor, it's in the administration budget, not the planning budget.
Okay, thank you. And someone from KB, they want to come up, so we can see who.
Hi, good evening. Tate Wilson with KB Advisory Group, I am a director there, and apologies for Jeff Kosky, our president, not being able to be here this morning, but given the conversations that I've heard tonight, I think that this is an extremely important study, and so we hope to provide that clarity and, and really create a tool for good decision-making on that. And I will also introduce Eric Clarkson, he is our, with us with Pendleton.
Sure, glad to be here, thank you very much. As I said, we're with the Pendleton Group. Mayor Bill Floyd couldn't be here tonight as well, former mayor decatur with Pendleton, so I'm, I guess substituting and work sub at Pendleton with KB Advisory Group, and very excited to be working on this. I, I know that KB has a lot of experience in this area, as well as we do at Pendleton, in working in DeKalb County with annexations.
Okay, thank you, former mayor. All right, take care. All right.
Mayor Maddox. I just want to alert the council that it's 10:15, and that a motion must be made by 10:30 with a vote to extend the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll keep moving, and any other comments from the public? Yes, Mr.
Madam Mayor, council, city managers and others, we want to thank y'all, Sean and I, for whoever allowed Assistant Chief to put that sign up coming down Norman Road. It has helped some slowing that traffic down, and we just wanted to say we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. For Mr. Dean Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, Dean Moore, Rafer Trail. I appreciate you putting the horse in front of the cart on this annexation. Nobody happened to mention what areas being annexed, but at least it's going to be studied, and we won't have the same situation we had last time when it was announced that we were going to annex all the way to North DeKalb Mall just a few years ago, if anybody remembers that night. We had quite a outpouring of public comment at that time, and if you decide to have another party, I encourage you to do it with something more positive. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, any other comments from the public? Okay.
I think it's important.
Okay, did you?
Is it okay if Mr. Edwards gives a quick scope of the project?
Sure.
Because I know, he, Mr. Moore mentioned that no areas are included in the plan.
All right, we're describing, yeah.
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, yeah, so on this one, as we discussed before we put out the RFQ, we decided to give the consultant that flexibility to examine all of the unincorporated area around the city of Clarkston, because there may be something out there financially and numbers-wise makes sense that doesn't make sense on a map, so we've kind of given them that flexibility to tell us what makes the most sense, what will balance our tax digest, increase our commercial space, and make sure we're not just doing all single-family, but there's a good bit of business incorporated with this. They're also going to go in on looking at staffing for the city that this would bring into account, and all the public services and public infrastructure that'll be involved in any annexation as well.
All right, thank you for that, thank you. Okay, with that, did we say this is a regular agenda item or consent?
Consent.
Consent? 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 You can, Councilman Carroll?
Yeah, consent.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to P, and thank you all, we're almost at the finish line, thank you. We'll, we'll look at, which is O on your sheet, to discuss the Georgia Trans, Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, 2026 Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, LMEG, as you've heard throughout this evening, potential grant, potential projects and LMEG applications submitted to GDOT. Mr. Kaiser.
So, we, we talked previously about the available money through LMEG this year, which is $125,000. I should say this year, meaning '26. That's not a lot of money, given, let me back up. Council has made significant headway on resurfacing and milling quite a few roads in the city the last two years. The ones that remain, should remain the way they are until we get resolution, as an example, College Avenue. College Avenue, we know that there are some stormwater issues, and there's also a, a request at one time for speed control, traffic calming. It hasn't come back again, but the drainage problem still exists. And so, until we address the stormwater problems through a enterprise program, then we will worry about milling and resurfacing College Avenue, and/or adding traffic calming if that does come back up. There are other roads that just don't carry a lot of traffic, not that they're, should never be resurfaced, but they're marginal, they're in fair condition, but there are two big ones, we talked about, North Indian Creek and Montreal Road, that require a lot of funding. So my recommendation is to roll it over into '27. Got $125,000, maybe a little more, maybe $130,000 in '27, so you got $250,000 more or less. You have to find another $300,000 to match that sometime in fiscal year of '27. So my recommendation is, is do all the GDOT paperwork, get your signature on it, ask for a rollover, submit it before February 1st, and GDOT will say okay, and then we'll worry about it in '27.
Okay, thank you. And we previously have done this before.
Yes, correct.
Right.
'23, '24, LMEG.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council at this time? Any questions or comments from the public? Do we have anyone signed up? Nope, okay. We're doing good. You're doing great out there, thank you so much for hanging in there, I really appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, I'll just mention that the proposed budget does reflect the rollover.
Okay, okay, so we are ready. All right, so with that, is that consent? Consent? Okay, all right. Consent, Councilman Carroll?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll sign off on that one. Next is Q, which is your P, to discuss a resolution requesting sound barriers along the Clarkston side of Highway 285, and that was Councilman Carroll.
Yes, I'll be brief. So, we, I proposed this several years ago, and the response we heard from Congressman Hank Johnson's office at the time is that this won't happen until there's a lane extension, and then that's the time to go back and ask for it again. And so, lo and behold, we're here, there's a 285 lane extension being proposed, so I think now is the time to ask for the sound barrier, particularly if it will be expanding traffic. I think it's a lot of bad for sound, there's also pollution benefits to a sound barrier, there's some shows that particles, pollution to some extent, get, and get, and hit the barrier, don't actually go up and above and increase pollution in the area next to the barrier as much as it would otherwise. So this is just a resolution requesting that, and I think we're going to be in touch hopefully with Hank Johnson's office to hopefully get this done, at the same time that the lane extension happens in 285. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions about this item? All right. Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, thank you. So with this resolution, is this a consent or general? Consent?
It's not drafted yet, can we keep it on regular?
We'll have it on regular? Perfect. Okay. So we'll have this on regular. Thank you. And the next one is R, Q for you, and that's to discuss a resolution to amend the Parks Master Plan to include consideration of Mylum Lake area, and that's also Councilman Carroll.
Yes, so this is, that's something that's been brought by some of the member, the property owners along Mylum Lake, is that there's been discussion for a long time about, you know, what is the public role in Mylum Lake, is there, you know, potential public use of it? And, and they, they're interested in that, and they want to have a public feedback process through the Parks Master Plan, which I think is a good way to have a regimented, city-involved feedback, because I talk with some people, and they say, yes, we do want to be involved, but you know, that I hear, you know, other people may not want to be involved, and rather than just go by hearsay or guesses, I think it's better to have official feedback through the Parks Master Plan, and then we can have a process to hopefully move forward from there. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Vice Mayor Johnson?
My question is for the community. The last time we spoke to this area, they were not interested in merging or allowing the city to take possession of a certain part of the lake. I think somebody mentioned that we had to have a liability insurance, we had to do so many things, and they didn't want us to have that right. So, somebody need to make, help me understand what we're doing, because this, before it got on the agenda, I did go to the meeting, but nobody basically said, we're in, we want to do this. Is there a petition somewhere? Where are we with it?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a copy, and this was sent from Ms. Kathy Burrows, but there's a petition with, um, let's see how many signatures? There's 10, 10 signatures, 10 names for support of adding Mylum Lake to the Recreation Plan, Parks and Rec Plan. Yeah, she has her hand raised as well.
Okay. Kathy?
Sure.
You can speak now, I think.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I have this terrible reverb, I hope you can understand. Madam Mayor and City Council, I'm Kathy Burrows with the Clarkston Shores Corporation and Cleve Mark Drive, and we've had a series of resident meetings in the last year. The first meeting, we established a willingness by consensus to explore a 10-year master plan.
So Kathy, Kathy, can you?
Can you guys understand me?
So, you, you, I don't know if you, you, I see you on there twice.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Let me sign. Let me turn off my cellphone, maybe that's what the, but that's my notes. Sorry. Can you hear me better?
Can you mute the other one? Now it's fixed, okay, keep, go with it, come on, let's go.
I'm so sorry, that was my mistake.
No problem.
Did a survey last year, and the consensus was that the residents of Clarkston Lake Crystal Pond were open to the idea of doing some programming on the Norman Road frontage that wouldn't necessarily impact the private property. So what we're trying to come up with is a really good compromise solution, and being part of the master plan for Parks and Recreation is a really good and organic and natural way for us to explore the ways that we can build a collaborative partnership with the city and the county. And the county has expressed a willingness to provide substantial funding if the city could help manage it, so this was also a vehicle, by way that funding could be managed with no overlay, cash overlay required of the city. So we've done an intensive, we've done a survey, we did, we had everyone sign, as many people who attended an agreement to do a master plan, and then more recently, a general receptivity to being part of a Parks and Recreation 10-year plan as a way of exploring ways to do outreach, education, floating classroom, maintenance, erosion, stormwater, and as a, a way to work, begin to establish a collaborative relationship that would be co-governed by the city, the county, the lake residents, and Clarkston Shores Corporation. So, we never, this isn't a, a way of moving toward a lake being re, you know, takeover, so to speak. It's a way of establishing an ongoing collaborative way of managing the lake, that the lake could benefit the citizens of Clarkston with fishing, with boating, with other opportunities, but everything would be kind of, make sure that it met with the residents' approval, and that it worked, and that we could tweak it and refine it as needed. So this is a perfect opportunity to begin that dialogue and collaboration.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. And so, just, just for clarity, perspective, how many people or how many homes are around the lake? And of that, how many agree to even being part of the master plan? Because I, I think that's important as a city, you know.
I got a motion. I got a question. It's 10:30.
Okay, okay.
I make a move to extend this meeting by seven minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded that we extend this meeting to seven minutes, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to roll this out. Okay, with that. Okay, with that, how many?
Oh, she's answering the question.
So, so I asked a question. Thank you, Councilwoman Bell. How many, how many homes? And of those homes, how many said that they want to be a part of this master plan?
We have seven.
I, as I recall, there's 32 or 34 residents that live around the lake and the pond. And the first agreement about the initial master plan, we had 17, we had 17 households attend the meeting, and 17 households agreed. And then more recently, we had 14 households attend, and 10 households agreed. So of the, it was the majority of those in attendance.
Okay, with that, you had your last one.
My, my question is for, I have two, Madam Mayor. One for the city manager and one for the city attorney. What phase of the master plan are we at right now?
We only have a month left to go in the plan. We actually, um, will expect draft at the end of December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have a question.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilman Perkins?
Yeah, so in light of that, I think that has changed the timeline. I think the idea behind this, since I seconded this item, is to try and create some kind of a formal, this, this comes up every couple of years, and there's differing ideas on what the lake can be used for, or should be used for, or who's responsible. And so this would be an option, and have to be the option to try and formally capture that, instead of it, you know, kind of being this ongoing thing. So we have a real clear directive from the Clarkston Shores Association, or the entity that might become, rebecome the Clarkston Shores Association of what y'all are interested in, what the boundaries are on that. And then that just, I think it prevents the cyclical nature of the conversation. So that's where, we could do this. If the timing on it doesn't work, that makes sense. But that's the problem we're trying to solve.
Madam Mayor.
A for that. Okay, yes.
We also, we also have a meeting scheduled with Commissioner Ted Terry on December 5th to discuss the county's, you know, their role or deliverables in this. I would like to really hear firsthand from them what their deliverables are, and what, you know, they might expect would be the city's deliverables in return.
Okay, thank you. And?
Well, I'll go ahead and ask the city attorney my question real quick. Mr. Quinn, with all of this being said, and they have a, I guess, a meeting petition, participation, petition, what is the percentage that they have to have on that petition for us to actually engage in this, putting them on the study if we were to put them on the master plan?
Well, I haven't seen the governing document for Clarkston Shores Association. It, I mean, this is speculation, but my best guess would be that it needs at least 50% of the lots to be in favor of any decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone?
Can I ask one more quick question? On that, would, would they need, because this isn't a commitment to using the land. This is a commitment to participating. We haven't asked that of anybody else in the city. Would they be, would this be different than that? I know the lake itself is private property, but it does overly?
Well, I don't know that, I mean, if the city wanted to make a decision to invest in a study for what is private property and would have to become some level of public to use the information from the study, if the city wanted to go ahead with that, not knowing whether they would ultimately agree to that or not, I suppose we could. You see what I mean? It's like, if, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone from the public? Oh, Councilman? Okay.
Getting back to adding this to the ongoing study, would this, would this be, incur any additional expenses? Would this incur any additional expenses if we added this to the ongoing study? And would it delay the ongoing study?
I believe, I believe, even if we could get community engagement in, in the last month, I don't see getting, getting any more information or detail than we currently have on this item. I think the timeline is a little bit short. And I can talk with Perez to see if, if we would have to incur any additional costs, maybe to have some additional public meetings. But it's, it's my understanding that we've had our public engagement sessions for, for this project.
If you could let us know that at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, city manager and city clerk. I'm Shawn Waters. I live at 996 Nielsen Drive, Clarkston, Georgia. Many of the residents around the Clarkston Lake are excited about the possibility or the prospect of being part of this master plan process. What the details are, or what shape that takes, or, you know, how that shakes out, or what it looks like, is, you know, that's still up for debate. And while I may disagree with some of the, the planning and ideas that Kathy may have, or some of my other neighbors may have, I still think it presents an opportunity, and one that begs, you know, for further investigation. So please know that, you know, we are working collaboratively as a community. And I mean, like, our neighbors are coming together in the hopes of re-establishment of a cohesive group for interfacing with the city, and in hopes of being, or working with the city of Clarkston on partnership for forward planning purposes. Thank you so much for your time, and I wish you all a good evening.
Yeah, thank you. And so?
I have to make an emergency motion.
Make it till 11. Well, it says 11. So you just have to? Yeah, okay. All right. So with that, technically, we made a motion to extend the meeting.
That gives us till 11:07.
Right, right. 11:07, y'all. Trying to, okay. So with that, do we have anyone from the public who wanted to speak on this item? Okay, we got, see?
Good evening all. Madam Mayor, council, and associates. My name is Mark Osborne, 1043 Cleve Mark Drive. I, I'd like to emphasize keeping it simple, particularly as it relates to the Norman Road improvements. And my concern is that there are a lot of blue-sky ideas that have been thrown out. I think if we could keep things as simple as possible, perhaps, simply encapsulating it as a nature preserve area, not all these other things. Let me take you back. When Ted Terry had proposed affordable tiny homes, and ended up clear-cutting all of the land on the forest side of Mylum Park, all that did is run all of the nature off. And it wasn't until just a couple of years ago that we began to see the repopulation of a lot of that wildlife. And so, things have a tendency of getting out of hand, such as the new bridge that came in there. As usable, and as great as it is, it has been totally destroyed. For years, I would go down to the lake, I've been there for 40 years. And until recently, when someone at the end of Cleve Mark ended up putting a new, new build, kids from the, from the apartments were always coming down and leaving fishing hooks, fishing lines. And it was a real terror for me taking my dogs down there, and my having to get fishing hooks and other garbage out because there were people coming through. Can we please keep it simple so that we can get the improvements to Norman Road completed? Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, anyone else? Anyone?
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Ann Steve Bates. I live at 1101 Cleve Mark Drive. Regarding this issue of incorporating the Clarkston Lakes into Mylum Park, and the way this is being, has gone about, I think we are putting the cart before the horse. Okay? The city attorney asked about the governing document for the Clarkston Shores Association. There is an existing governing document for the association. It's called the bylaws, that states that one member, executive member, cannot hold two positions at the same time. Kathy, I appreciate the effort that she has made over the years trying to find a way for us to better maintain the issues with the lake. And it may be in the best, best interests of the lake long-term for it to be managed by the city. Okay? But I think the, the way it's being gone about is not the right way. Kathy, first of all, I was the last president of the Clarkston Shores Association in 2019. In 2020, when we had the pandemic, the, the association hasn't had a meeting since 2019. There hasn't been any elected officers since 2019. Okay? And my effort, I have suggested this several times, that what we do is that we re-establish the association so that the association can speak as one voice. There has been no serious effort to meet with the members that live around the lake to determine what they would like, what their interests are. My property is directly affected by flooding. Half of my backyard floods whenever we have heavy rains. Okay? I don't have a problem working with the city, or having the city be a part of helping the, the neighbors maintain the lake. Okay? But we don't know what is in the master plan, what we are getting. I did not vote for incorporating the lake into Mylum Park, as was suggested. I did not vote for that. I attended that meeting, and I did not vote for that. There are, my last count, there are like 29, 30 residents that live around the lake. And when we go to these meetings, there are only like, maybe 10, 12, 15. Okay? And everyone does not vote for what has not voted for what is being proposed. So that is my concern, is that the association be re-established, and that members actually speak as one voice, as opposed to having one person speaking for the entire association. I don't think that is right.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
Ned, I just want?
Well, let him come, and then we'll finish.
I just want to address the miscommunication.
Let him finish, let him finish, and then I'll let you address that.
Madam Mayor, city council, and the city manager, city clerk. I have an objection to the name on this sheet, calling it Mylum Lake. It's actually Clarkston Lake. And there's some history behind Mylum Park being named for the Mylums, but I'm not sure why it was done. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. All right. And we'll have one more resident, and then we'll allow council to come back. Our two more residents.
Council members, mayor. I just wanted to echo what my neighbors are saying here. My name's Sam Morris, I live on 1038 Nielsen. So just wanted to show my support with what they're saying. I agree with them.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, council, city manager, and others. We have some ideas in place, but we want to know what the master plan is. We, as Bates said, the city, county, the lake association, we don't need to put the cart before the horse. We need to re-establish the association first. We've got some ideas, and we think that y'all will like them. But we want to get things in order. Thank you.
Thank you. And state your name.
Robert Gwynnfree.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify too, we're not incorporating, and I just realized the, this is my mistake, because I seconded this, and I misread the, the title of the agenda item on the Mylum Lake comments. I appreciate you, Mr. Morris, for correcting that. So it is Clarkston Lake, the Clarkston Shores Association. What's being proposed is not to incorporate it into Mylum Park. So that's not, that's not on the agenda. The question is trying to get y'alls, the idea behind it was to try and get some level of objective feedback to hear from y'all collectively. And I just, one or two conversations here or there, what's in range of which y'all would accept or are interested in? Obviously, that doesn't get into the money side of it. That doesn't get into access rights, things like that. But if we don't have any kind of formal understanding of what's, what you are open to as a neighborhood, and what you're not open to, then, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to move forward from there. And if the answer is, "We're not interested in anything," we've got it formal, signed, sealed, and delivered, and then our next conversation needs to have a lot more behind it. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we will, there isn't a resolution for this, is there? No, okay. All right, so it'll be a regular agenda item. All right, so with that, we'll move to item Q R. One more person. Oh, one more person, come on. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council people. My name is Marlene Bates. I am, live at 1101 Cleve Mark Drive as well. And so our, I'm on the lake as well. I've attended a couple of the meetings, and I'm a kind of stickler also. I'm an educator, and so I, things are, I have to, things are literal. I need things to be literal. There were some documents sent around at the last meeting, and they were, everybody was supposed to sign it. I didn't sign all of them, but I think what Kathy has, she says there's a, you know, a list, and we have 17 signatures. But that list is not attached to any document. So the conversation was going around, this is a sign-up for the meeting, and then this one is for the, the plan. And, you know, the way it was presented was, this was for a 10-year plan. So it was like, is this a plan that's going to start in 10 years? Or is this going to start now and go for 10 years? That's where we, as the homeowners, are not sure. It's not that we don't want to, you know, show off our lake, yes, definitely. Okay? And we definitely want to maintain it as well. We do have a new, fresh group of neighbors, homeowners, who are interested in becoming part of the association. So we're looking forward to that happening. And if you put it on the agenda, we'll be back next time.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments. So, yes.
We have two hands raised. Catherine Morgan, I don't believe she has spoken.
Okay, Catherine.
Hi, I am Catherine Morgan, and I live at 1056 Nielsen Drive. Hello to the mayor, hello to all the members of the city council. And I just want to say that I am just glad to be a part of this conversation today. And I totally, totally stand in agreement with my neighbors that we want to be able to show off the lake. I've been at this residence for 22 years. I am a proud and active neighbor. However, I have not attended a lot of the meetings due to my travel schedule for work. But I do want to say that I would love to see what the master plan includes. Not a yea or a nay, either way right now, but I just want to know what is included in the master plan.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments. Okay, so, yes, so with that, we will have this on the agenda for next week. All right, thank you all for your comments. Thank you, Lake, Clarkston Lake. So we got on the same page now, right? Clarkston Lake. Okay, we appreciate that. And with that, coming to the home stretch, let's have some peace, y'all. And with that, we have item S, and that's to discuss a letter of support for heavenly culture, world peace, restoration of light, H W P L, Georgia. And that is Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. So this is simply a letter of support for heavenly culture, world peace, restoration of light, Georgia. They've already been doing work in and around Clarkston, but not directly in our city limits. And so this is our ability to be very strategic, but also intentional about our approach that aligns with our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, where we- about our approach, um, that aligns with our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, where we are set to support community engagement centered around families, children, refugees' needs. Um, and this essentially, this letter of support would just increase credibility, partnerships, and also just the community's support to engage with us, um, in those efforts.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the council? Councilwoman Adeet?
Clarkson is known for its diversity in faith, culture, race, and ethnicity.
Okay, speak a little louder in the mic, we can.
I think it's for children.
Is it on?
It was, yeah, it's the last time you did it.
Oh, yeah, you might have to use Susan's.
Yours, Susan.
Yeah. Let me switch up.
I want to say, Clarkson is known for its diversity in faith, culture, race, and ethnicity, and I would like to know how the organization, uh, would ensure inclusion in leadership and employment and services.
Oh, you would like for them to come up? Yeah? Okay.
Now, I can't answer the question in regards to the employment leadership, because it's all volunteer-based, uh, I mean, it's youth-based that are leading it, but we do have representation from here if you want to know more about the organization structure and, uh, their ability to transform leadership to make sure it looks like the resident of Clarkson. Would y'all like to come up?
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Doin, um, I lead the International Law Department, and so, to your, um, your question, um, we are, like Councilwoman Bell said, we are volunteer-based, so, uh, we don't have, um, any employees. All of us are youth and volunteers that, um, do the work together, and so, um, we do have many different religions, backgrounds, and cultures within our volunteer base that do all of our projects together.
So, no employees at all?
No.
Okay.
Just volunteers.
Just volunteers, just volunteers.
Okay, and, and would you include, like, different ethnicities, different faith?
Oh, yes, we're very diverse.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Comments from the public? Nope. So, so for this, Councilwoman Bell, that we just need to have a letter?
So, we, we already have a letter, only thing I need to do is just change the signature piece at the bottom, but it's attached to the documents.
Okay, all right, so change the signatures on the bottom. We're good.
So, I think, there's that. I would like to move forward with this being on consent.
Okay. Is it con- consent? Consent? Mm-mm. Okay, the hour is late, it's consent, we'll just change the, the stuff on the bottom, and we're good to go. Councilman Carroll, consent?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We are in unison, and yes, under five, so with that.
We could be over, but we got to say it until 11:07 now.
What, no, we don't?
No, 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 we're done, so I'll take a motion.
I have a motion.
Thank you all.
A move, a move we adjourn.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Our meeting is adjourned, and I'll see you after my birthday.